Yes, it's not that. It's just, is it time? All right. Call this town council work session for Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 to order. First Planning Commission decisions. Anything to discuss besides the long driveway? No? Okay. Legislative review. Subordination agreement for Stables Village, second reading. Anyone?
Anyone?
I, I can do this one.
Great.
So this is an agreement because the developer in this case realized that they could reduce the costs of financing by changing the lender. It's quite common to have a lender in this particular situation request a subordination agreement. We've done it in almost every prior housing develop workforce development project that we've worked on. So they're pretty standard. And this is on second reading, I believe Lori Best will be here, but if not, I can cover any questions that you have now or tonight.
Thank you, Kirsten. Any questions on this one? We've seen it before, so we should be all good. All right. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Sorry, my agenda's not coming back up. All right, ordinance to adopt new water rents. James, second reading.
Good afternoon. This as presented at our last meeting, it just is really revises Title 12 to update definition, the water rates, usages and fees structure. All those that I just previously mentioned were adopted as part of the 2024 budget. And this just revises it as it is captured in our town code, Chapter 12. And I'd be happy to take any questions if there's been any questions that have come.
So it just codifies a decision we've already made.
Correct.
Any other questions? So James, are, I saw that we're going to increase for a set amount of time. And then in 2028, we're going to go back down to the 5%.
What has been proposed, it hasn't, I mean, certainly we'll have opportunities to discuss that as we get closer to that calendar year. But when Raff Tellis had done that previous study, that was one of their recommendations that came out of that. But in preparation for the potential of making further changes, we would also couple that with another rate analysis, analysis study.
Okay, that's great. That's all I was wondering is if that was flexible. It sounds like it is. Okay. Anything else for James?
Thank you.
Much. All right, we're going to have code updates to Policy 22A and Policy 48A regarding defensible space. Hi Cliff.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So for the record, Cliff Cross Planner 2. For you this afternoon, I have the first reading of the code amendments to Policy 22 and Policy 48. Both of these are regarding defensible space, both voluntary and required. So as outlined in the memo, we have made some changes since our last work session. So I can definitely go over those, or I can definitely answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for Cliff?
Is this mostly for new construction, or is it kind of retrofitting existing places?
Yes, sir. So for Policy 22, that is our required defensible space under new construction or major remodels. So major would be 10% or more. And then Policy 48 is our voluntary policy. So property owners are basically given the regulations to voluntarily implement defensible space into their property.
Is there any sort of rebate or any, any kind of a perk or a seduction to get?
Um, protection of your property.
Not burning your house.
What happens if you rent that? Well, you can. I, yeah, okay, thanks.
A good reason. Any others?
We've heard from multiple people throughout, in different pieces presented to council that insurance, homeowners insurance is really difficult to come by and the rates are skyrocketing. Is there any part of this that can be applicable to helping those looking to get insured? I believe a lot of this is multifamily or, but I think it's coming down to even single family dwellings.
So this code specifically is for all properties, residential and even, you know, some commercial, if they would want to utilize these regulations or kind of suggestions. When it comes to, you know, those issues with homeowners insurance, definitely a lot of our community partners, even wildfire council has given a lot of updates. I believe Matt Benedict is here with us today, red, white and blue wildfire division captain. Him and his team do provide quite a lot of assessments all around town. They basically are able to meet with the property owner, give them a score, I believe, and then give them basically a informational checklist that goes over their property specifically. And they even have worked with property owners to directly communicate with their insurance of, hey, we did, you know, X, Y, and Z, and we know we've implemented the defensible space. And then those homeowner insurance policies have come down or have actually, in some cases for larger multifamily, provided a policy.
Is there anything that the town, by the town adopting code changes that encourages defensible space, is it possible that that would, that in itself would make this zone a more friendly zone for insurance?
Um, you know, that is the goal. Definitely, as we discussed in the work session, this is an ongoing discussion, you know, on town itself. It has some priorities differing than red, white and blue, specifically in our historic district, kind of preserving that character. But based on some of the comment from the council commission and our community partners, we have made a few changes to, you know, better our regulation. One specifically is going to be that non-combustible layer, zero to three feet within our conservation district and zero to five feet within our, you know, larger properties, Highlands, Warriors Market, et cetera. So that specifically is a major change, kind of brought to us from what red, white and blue that we believe is really going to make it a better policy, protecting that last five feet of the property before the structure.
And I'm sure you've heard, just like I have, like some of these properties like Gold Camp, some of these older properties that are kind of on the peripheral of our boundaries, it's getting slammed with, with a insurance increase. I don't know if the town can do anything about it. If there's any sort of outreach, do we, do we, you know, kind of hire someone to, to talk, talk to an insurance company on a national level about it. But yeah, they, they are making some of these properties almost unlivable by the accelerating insurance costs of, you know, to insure these places.
Yes, sir. And definitely through our last meeting at wildfire council, that was a big topic.
Yeah.
It is something, you know, the town itself is trying to work towards. You know, being able to really support these HOAs because insurance prices are astronomical.
Yeah.
But through the assessments, through red, white and blue, even making these code amendments are, you know, being viewed by those insurance companies and will hopefully kind of help alleviate some of these issues that we're having.
Cool.
Well, thank you very much, Cliff, and thank you, Matt. And I mean, we hear all the time what a good partner, red, white and blue, has been with staff, but also to many of our neighbors in the community. So thank you guys very much for that.
Actually, on daylight savings signs, you're supposed to change the batteries in the smoke detector. Have you done that? And clean them too. Yeah.
Before you leave.
Yes, sir.
There was a couple of specific items that I wanted just to, I guess more comment than question, if that's all right. On 4B. See, it's on our page three where it says, "All vegetation combustible and flammable materials shall be removed from under all eaves, decks and other architectural features." That varies from the NFPA. And I was just curious why the variance, why, why we're not being stricter? And why are it's only under eaves, decks and other features versus just purely away from wall exteriors?
Um, so it definitely is kind of, I guess this might be somewhat of a typo or, let me reread this.
What's NFBA?
Oh, the National Fire Protection.
So the intention of that language is more or less within that zero to five feet. You know, we would want you to remove landscaping materials. I guess we can go back and clarify some of that language. But the intention is basically saying to include decks, other protrusions from the main structure that we're not storing or, you know, keeping other combustibles in that area. So the zero to five feet, starting at architectural features, porch, deck, et cetera.
That's great. If we could clarify that, that would be fantastic. And then on page 13.
Jesus.
My first one is K. So that is section 3K on page 13. Maybe the third paragraph down. It says, "All personnel involved in the enforcement of this policy shall be trained by the director to make sure that they are aware of the town's goal of preserving buffers and required landscape materials while creating defensible space." In this portion, I feel that that almost provides an out for all the code that's put in there. That if the director says that it's okay to have mulch against the exterior to preserve the landscaping, you know, required landscaping or preserving buffers, then it's okay. I would love for you to consider taking that out. That last sentence on, on K. And then lastly, my last thing was the downtown core map under letter L of that same section. It just, from my understanding, this is factually incorrect. And I just, I would love to flush that out a little bit more that in that properties that have been identified within the downtown core map are areas that were developed in a manner that includes many roadways and other hard surfaces, surface features that act as fire breaks. From my understanding, they don't, especially in our climate with the wind, with embers, that those roads don't act as fire breaks. And if that's the truth, then I would prefer not to have L in there at all.
Yeah. I guess just to touch on your last two comments. You know, the intention of that language is more or less allowing staff to have a little bit of flexibility when it comes to protecting the character of the town. As many of you know, the historic district is a very unique place. And one part of that is some of our historic trees, the mature trees, especially some of the cottonwoods across from the USPS. So staff definitely does like having some of the flexibility in kind of your, your previous and K to kind of make the, those exceptions and key decisions to protect more mature and, you know, character contributing trees within our historic district. You know, for L, your comments on L in that sentence, you know, I am, I'm not a fire professional, nor am I a botanist or arborist. But I can definitely, you know, as I mentioned, this is an ongoing discussion. We are trying to find that balance of protecting our historic district while also trying to meet the intention of these policies, fire safety and, you know, mitigating our wildfires. So staff can definitely take that back in and discuss it with other community partners.
I appreciate it, Cliff. And it's, and I guess maybe if we can narrow K down a little bit, so it's not so broad. I think that most of us were here in 2007 when we saw the flames from downtown, you know, on peak two and then coming into peak seven. And I think that now that that is 17 years in our past, it, it's easy to forget the terror that was, you know, part of our lives for a good week when that was happening and to do whatever it's necessary to, to protect that so that when that day comes again, that we're in the best shape possible.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Appreciate that. Thank you all.
Just want to add on the flip side of that, I really do agree with what you said about protecting the character of the community. So I think while I agree that we want to move closer to as fire safe as we can be, I also do appreciate the effort that you guys have put into kind of having a consideration for that character. And so I think if there's, if it's like an either or, maybe it needs to be brought back to the council so that we can decide if there's a middle ground that is, you know, that we can, that you can show us for upcoming, then that sounds great. The middle ground sounds great. But at the same time, I just, I do want to present the others. I don't want every, I don't want you to feel like we're giving you the direction to come back with fire wise, at all cost ordinance.
I, I appreciate the distinction between downtown core, historic core and the outline areas that border the forest. You know, I think they're more at risk, the outline, you know, that border the forest than, than in town, they, you know, and in town situations can be noticed far more quickly and, and, and probably extinguished far more quickly.
But in downtown, the houses are closer together. So to have multiple dwellings go up is far more likely in the core town than it is in the White Horns, for example. And I think that was one of the things that I received out of reading up on this is that having roadways, driveways in a grid situation doesn't really help prevent, it's not a fire break in that you can go from having, you know, an ember to dozens of structures inflame very, very quickly in the downtown core.
Oh, I hear you. And I understand that I I just, I, I think the dangerous piece. I, I'm not defending the hard surfaces, Jake. I'm, I'm more defending the, the the, the amount of resources and people in the downtown core as opposed to in our outline areas. So, because I agree with you, I don't know that the hard surfaces make much difference in, in an ember fire like that. But I look forward to having Matt and Clinton have a discussion after hearing our comments and seeing what you guys come back with and, you know, having the professionals weigh in on it.
There's men?
Always.
All right, demolition by neglect ordinance. First reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Pretlem and Council. Um, before you, today is a first reading of the bill amending Title IX, Chapter 11, Historic Preservation Code, focusing on demolition by neglect provisions and extending those to all historic structures. To get into the changes, since the last town council meeting, there were a couple of different wording changes to the demolition by neglect definition, stabilization definition, and a change in the title for a section nine, 11, seven, which is section three of the bill. There were also some wording changes to the demolition section, some that were added and some that were removed. And there was additional wording added, designating stabilization of secondary structures as a Class D minor permit with a waived fee and reduced submitted requirements to make that an easier process for stabilization. And then the existing penalties in enforcement section was extended to all historic structures and some additional wording was added that was drafted by the town attorney. In addition to these amendments, staff is proposing a grant program that we will be discussing later this afternoon. And staff is also proposing to do a yearly walkthrough to monitor the, the condition of our historic buildings and secondary structures to make sure we're just keeping an eye on everything and nothing's going to the wayside without us noticing. And staff recommends the town council approve the demolition by neglect code amendments at first reading and is available for any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Sure, I'll start it off. Yes. I was curious, so I spoke to a couple of residents that are property owners in the core and the historic area just because I'm not familiar with the, the amount of onus that this would put on a homeowner. And some of the feedback was just asking, you know, what are the properties that would be asked to be improved? Is it, you know, when we're looking at the map, obviously the not maintained, I think there's two red dots there that I imagine that would be the first two we'd be looking at for this year. Would you move down to the poorly maintained, the orange? Would that be, would that be in the spectrum of the, the structures that would be addressed?
Yeah, so this will be kind of also covered during the historic grant work session. But we'd be focusing, focusing on the two structures that were considered not maintained as well as the other, I believe, 11 or 12 structures that were considered poorly maintained.
Maybe just a little clarification though, Jay. We haven't, I, I think it's pretty clear, those two structures are, you know, they're, they're in danger and we need to address those. The others are in bad shape, but we haven't looked at them enough to make the call whether we would actually approach the landowner and say, you have to do this. Because this was what the, that's what this ordinance would give us, us the ability to do on properties that aren't landmarked right now. So we would still have to make that call. And frankly, we'd rather approach them in a more amenable way to start with and say, hey, we see you've got a potentially failing structure here. And then that's kind of where the grant program may be able to help feed in with that. So it's not just all, you know, using, using the stick, but the carrot as well. So we haven't determined if we would actually make, you know, property owners with those poor condition sheds actually repair them. We've got closely at their condition.
To that point, there was a suggestion that once we talked about the grant program is to build the grant program into the code. So the carrot and stick are together. And, and I wasn't sure if that was something that was an option or not of building the, the grants into the, into the code with the, with the ordinance.
Yeah, we hadn't really discussed that. I mean, we certainly could if you guys suggested we could add some language into this regarding that after we have our discussion on the grants program.
And then on the historic structures, is the definition on those, is that going to be 50 years? Or is it before, prior to a date certain of?
There's a historic structures definition in Chapter 1, our development code that we're going to be referencing for this chapter, which is why it's not defined here. And it's any structure built prior to 1943 that is not landmarked and is not listed on the national register.
Like ballpark on this red dot shed, like what's, what's, what would it, would it cost a homeowner to, to bring it up to enough so it's not going to, not going to fall down? What are we talking? How much money? And, and if we don't get the grants, that's going to fall on the landowner. And so what, what would he ballpark? And, and are there people that do this stuff, that specialize? I mean, I can't get a plumber to come in that house, let alone some guy that rebuild a barn.
Well, so there are some people that, there's at least one person that Breckenridge History typically works with. So they had reached out to get an estimate from them. And they may be somebody that the property owners in Breckenridge History use as part of this grant program. The initial estimate, I don't have the memo for the work session in front of me.
Thirty, thirty-five thousand.
This is like 20 to 30,000 max. A little bit less.
For that specific structure, it currently doesn't have a roof. So it's a much higher stabilization cost than most of the other structures would be.
And does that increase the property value at all? Is that something that, that they can at least justify the outlay saying, well, maybe I'll get it back when I sell this place?
You know, possibly. I mean, it, it's storage is how they'd be used.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
There's some value.
I actually did get the permission from Robin Theobald when I was speaking with him. And he had some heartburn over the definition of stabilization and kind of the latitude that that provides. And I know that was rewritten for this. But I think it was more of shoring and or bracing to ensure structural integrity as approved by the town to ensure longevity of the structure and its historic fabric. And then it goes on to list, including roofing, siding, roof structures, roof rafters, load bearing walls, drainage, grading and foundation. And just, I think you could take that and there's different degrees of application. And it was of his desire to see that narrowed down a little bit of, in his words of make it so it doesn't fall down would be, you know, in simplicity. And I don't know, again, maybe looking at.
Do you want to broaden the language?
No, I think he wants to loosen it.
Saying that, yeah, I think his fear is that town comes in and says, you need to build a foundation. You need to redo these walls and shore up this and, and put this kind of roofing on. Where it's just like, if it's not going to fall down, are we good? And so I just thought that was interesting. Again, this is outside the context of my personal knowledge, but I thought there was some interesting feedback there.
Yeah, thanks for that, Jay. Staff had the exact same conversations and you may recall when we came to you earlier, we, it didn't, we had backed some of that language off because we're concerned, I mean, really to going, you know, shoring up the walls, bracing it, getting a roof on it's very important for longevity. Foundation is too, but when you're talking about the expense of a foundation and that, that's a different ballgame. And, but actually some of the comments from Beck, Breck History that came in, that you guys saw some of those, I think Carol may have helped present some of those, made us decide to leave most of that intact. And our thought process on this is we're going to have to be, use our discretion in terms of how we apply this. Because I would not think in most cases, we're going to go in and say, well, in most cases, there's not even a foundation to start with on like sheds and stuff like that. But we're going to be selective about what we require to do exactly what Robin is saying. Keep the building from falling down. That's really the goal.
And I think that's wonderful while you're, you know, while you're in charge, you know, we know that, that. But just thinking about as leadership changes and things like that of what kind of, what kind of language is in there? I think words matter. And just kind of maybe double, double checking that, making sure we're comfortable with it.
And some of this language came from talking to our building department and looking at the building code requirements and making sure we're kind of following with that. Because this stabilization definition applies to all historic structures. So while we may mostly be enforcing it on secondary structures, like in the case of an actual primary residence needing stabilization, then some of those brought more specific requirements would be needed.
And, and what about as far as like quid pro quo? What about the properties that, that are on town, county open space? Like, you know, the, the Preston area and some of these other historical structures? Are we kind of holding ourselves to the same standards and holding OSAC to the same standards?
No, those are, well, they're, they're all, as you know, in the unincorporated county.
Okay.
And so
You know, that one in Preston, it has just a strap across it, around it.
It's not going to fall down.
It's kind of like a
Work so far.
Yeah.
It's definitely something Breck History, as you know, has been working on, like the Jesse and the Wellington Oral and that. So some of those will be addressed that way, but.
It's not, it's not now wheelhouse.
Yeah.
And there is a difference here. We're talking about the national historic district. And it is the downtown course. I think things are held to a different standard. With the language Jay pointed out, if there is something, again, with working with the building department, I appreciate the language staying the same, but if something like the foundation is too prescriptive and an incredibly high cost, is that maybe leave out that? But I defer to you all on what, what needs to be so prescriptive.
And, and yeah, for an outhouse, you know, you're not going to have one. But yeah, this is a yeah, this is a tough one, you know, cause how specific do we get? Or, I mean, we all have same end goal. Um, I'd encourage you to talk to some of the builders that have had some success in doing this and see if they have any input for us. You know, Ty Cartwright and people like that, you know, ask Breck history who, who they've worked with that, you know, seem to have a really practical knowledge in how to do this and might help us with some of the language, because part of me says make it more specific, but I also totally understand where Robin's coming from. You know, is, is empower people to do the right thing, but um, unfortunately they don't always in these situations, so. Yeah.
Um, I did want to say that Breck history has a master plan of a lot of the properties that we have. So while I think just in an effort to not hold private property owners to a different standard than we're holding ourselves to. I mean, they do have an overall plan and are getting there. I mean, there's a lot of properties, so.
Oh yeah.
Obviously they'll be trying. And then do we have, this is kind of a silly question, but do people know that they have a historic shed on their property?
Not always.
Okay, not as dumb of a question as I was thinking it was. And do we have a plan for letting people know that they have a historic shed on their property and that we have this new ordinance that says they have to make sure it doesn't fall down?
Um, we plan to address priority of these. The rest of them are all in really good shape and we don't anticipate there's gonna be any issues for years to come, but.
Your question to say, hey, that super nice shed is, you gotta make sure that it doesn't fall over in the future then to go and be like tomorrow.
Yeah.
You need something out here.
Certainly do some type of outreach to all the um, historic property owners and let them know that this is happening and.
I mean, even an email, you know, rather than setting, selling, sending Ellie door to door. I think communication's important here.
I think it'd be good to, especially if we have a map done here, it seems like we have enough information that we could just let them know that um, we've determined that their shed may be eligible and is certainly contributing to our historic downtown. And we hope that.
That's a great idea.
They'll be partners.
I think it also goes further to, to your point of it keeps someone from demoing it by accident if they didn't know it was historic. Um, and just accidentally, uh, in a remodel sort of.
Rather than demoing it the day after we tell them?
That's right, exactly.
Counsel, given the, the work that you've asked staff to go and do, um, and that this is on for first reading tonight, we will pull it from the agenda for tonight and bring it back to you um, when staff's had a chance to work on those items.
Thanks for all the work that you've done. It's a ton of work.
I agree. It, it helped spur a lot of our questions and discussions, so I think it's a good process.
We couldn't have had that.
Sorry for all the bombs that Jay threw.
No, but thanks for bringing it to us so quickly. I don't feel like it was that long ago that Janet spoke to planning commission, so thanks for acting on that.
Oh.
Agreed. Anything else?
Oh.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right, BGV development agreement, first reading.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. Uh, before yet, we have a small housekeeping item for first reading uh, tonight. Now, but uh, but seriously, uh.
I was just looking at Carol's baby.
It's, it's a big milestone tonight to get to a first reading. Um, we've provided the memo that shows um, the major changes from uh, the last work session. And uh, we also provide the red line poppy that shows all the changes that have taken place since the last work session. Um, hopefully to make it a little bit more palatable to, to read through and really uh, dive into. Um, understanding this is, we want to get this, get this right. Um, I, I think I propose to just maybe kind of go section by section. I know some of the uh, the council members do have some comments. They might even propose um, some changes, but overall um, we really appreciate the effort um, of the applicants to kind of get this turned around based on really all the feedback that we've received uh, through the twelve work sessions that we've had to this point. So um, without, unless you have any initial comments before we get going, um, hopefully we'll kind of have the same momentum we had like at the last work session, once we got our feet. Can move through this rather quickly.
Not the first part so much.
Not the first part where we kind of, I led us into a kind of awkward.
Chris and I just volleyed back and forth, hot potato. All right, do we have any questions for Chris first off or Truckee or? No. Alright, um, so Dick, do you want to start us off with some specific questions or um?
I have more comments than questions, but I'm happy to start.
Okay, I think that's fine. Anything before that, Jay?
Jay, do you have a question?
Shocking, shockingly he does that.
Just wait.
Um, two point two under the development intensity reduction. Um, when you do this stuff, will you kind of say the page and stuff? No, it's page seventy-one of the packet, page seven of the development agreement. Two point two.
We're under article two commitments, public benefits?
Yeah, yeah, I find this statement to be inaccurate. Um, it, it's not a public benefit or a choice of the applicant to um, not utilize the mass. Um, you know, to not follow the code. It's, it's simply the code. The, the um, public benefit came from us passing the ordinance a year or two ago or a couple of years ago. It's not choice of the applicant. So I would love to see that, that struck. I, I just, I don't think it's accurate. Um, two point three um, is probably the biggie. Um, I, I think that's the statement um, is, is uh, contrary to the entire process that we spent the last year doing. Um.
The last sentence.
The last sentence of two point three. Um, I feel like um, moving the density um, off F lot um, was the reasoning behind many of the discussions around variance. I think it was what motivated a number of council people to vote for the variances. And to have a statement like this in a development agreement, I could never vote for the development agreement with this statement in here. And I encourage other council people to take the same position because it's.
One of the few things that I read. And I had heartburn when we did peak six. Uh, uh, you know, we came to all these agreements and then, and then they, you know, the we said, let's stop the development of peak six and then at the end it was slipped in. Uh, unless we can do peak five if town, council, county and Rob Katz who wanted. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm with Dick on this one. I, in, in, there's no telling what a next council, councils down the road can do. I don't think it sets anything in stone, but I, I think this kind of leaves the door open that, you know, for me being psyched about this thing was this last sentence not being there. And, and uh, when I saw it, that kind of got my uh, my, piqued my interest. So I'm with Dicker on that one.
I think when uh, we went through this the first time, it said uh, parcel one for the time being will remain as a surface line. Uh, I think we spoke about that, uh, unified on that end. It seemed like the language got escalated going, instead of removed, it got pushed up to even more uh, open ended. And so I would agree on that.
Yeah, I agree with what Jay said and in the end, it just doesn't need to be called out in the development agreement and the, and yeah, future councils could do something different, but I think it's unnecessary to have this in writing.
Todd?
No comment.
Okay, um, so then let's also talk about uh, Dick's other comment with the intensity reduction. How do people feel about that? Paragraph. Dick's comment was um, yeah, two point two and it's referring to that the ninety thousand square feet. Um, you know, one of the public benefits is not having ninety thousand square feet of development in that, in the gondola lots. So how are people feeling about that?
My comment would be a question to Kirsten and Mark, asking what the ramifications of that two point two being in there is and what the value to the applicant is. I, I I don't know if that is binding, it, it doesn't bind us to anything. What, what is the purpose of having it there other than just as a an argument for uh, for the argument of the applicant to say, hey, this is what we're doing.
I think, you know, Mike can speak to this, but I think it's, you know, in, in trying to show public benefits, he's trying to demonstrate is there's going to be, you know, significantly less development there. And compared to the old development, which had the mass bonus in it, this won't. So um, you know, in the applicant's mind, this is a significant public benefit.
I think I agree. I think it is a public benefit uh, not to have it there, but we'll see how everybody else feels.
Kirsten, is there anything that this, in, in a development agreement that we should be aware of?
I, I don't have any concerns with it from a legal perspective. It's, it's a question as to whether you believe it's a public benefit.
And I guess just to remind you, there really is no threshold for a minimum or maximum public benefits. To some of you, it may be just not developing parking lots. To other ones, it may be important to have a complete package of not developing, donating to the fur, providing, you know, other things. So there's no right or wrong answer. It's what you think is the appropriate amount of public benefit. And if you agree also that the things listed are public benefits.
Yeah, so there's like eight items listed here, two, one through two, eight. You could have two, one, and that's all you would need.
Yeah, okay. Todd?
I think it's a great public benefit. I'm happy to have it in there as part of, you know, to me, it's part of the storyline that we're here and have sat through thirteen meetings. So I'm hundred percent okay with that being in there. Again, I think it's an important piece of why we're here.
Yeah, I think the question um, that Dick raises is an interesting one. So the question is not whether it's a public benefit that the ninety thousand square feet isn't um, developed. The question is really, is that public benefit being brought by Dudik and the team? Or is that really a result of our change in zoning? And so I think is the ninety thousand, um, I mean, I guess he could have developed the gondola lot master plan as proposed. And then he would have been allowed to use the old zoning, right?
Correct. I think that's what he's, he's proposing. Like if there's really an option A or B between the two, the other one would have more, more square footage overall.
That's how I look at it, Kelly, is that, that lens.
Could it be both? It's what he did and what we did?
Yeah, I mean, it is, yeah, it's a result of both of those things. I was just trying to um, make sure, I guess in my mind, that he had the op, that there was an opportunity for him to develop the bigger development um, be, using the old code.
Yeah.
And it was because he had the, he still had the right to develop that. Um, so I personally am okay with the ninety thousand staying in there as long as the um, sentence and the other one, which pretty much goes directly against the nothing in this agreement precludes landowner, that sentence comes out. Is that, I think I'm hearing where.
Um, I agree with you.
All right.
I mean, I've been alone for, I'm happy to be alone again.
So do you want to go on to your next?
Point five, um, I, as I stated before, and I have even stronger feelings about it now uh, based on all the letters that are beginning to come in, which I think are just the beginning of the letters talking about congestion on Ski Hill Road. I do not think the five hundred thousand dollar cap is there, it should be there. Um, I'm in agreement with the scope of the work. Um, but I do not think it should be capped. I think we should improve the Ski Hill Park Avenue intersection um, to every extent possible um, with no cap. And you know, after talking to our town engineer at length about what is to every extent possible within the parameters of that intersection and the private land and and everything else, I think the, that is, is captured fairly well in the scope as defined in two point five. And I'm, that is certainly a benefit and I'm appreciative of it and um, I think our citizens will be too, but um, I do not think it should be capped.
Would that be a moving target? How would we, how would someone know how much it would cost? Do we have any idea?
Responsibility of the developer regardless of what it would cost. I mean, I think our engineer has estimated the cost and it's less than five hundred thousand per her estimate, but that's an estimate. It could go over, you know? Um, I think that's the responsibility of the developer. It, it's not the responsibility up to a certain dollar amount. It's the responsibility of the developer and we got what, ten letters today? Trust me, we'll get another hundred more.
So you say just take out, take out.
Fifty people in here yelling at us. This cap doesn't bode well for them. Sorry, go ahead, Jeffrey.
So you just say take out the last sentence?
Yeah, take out the five hundred thousand.
All right.
Really just the last part of the last sentence. Just the up to five hundred thousand.
That intersection is responsibility of a lot of different parties and I'm okay with that with five hundred. And I think the towns will get ahead of you there. And I get that I'll probably
Jay?
You know, it's um, I heard this brought up at the uh, last council session and I understood that when we have code, when we ask for um, for certain things to be, you know, when things are to adhere to code or to adhere to building standards, we don't put caps on those. You know, we just say these, this is what you have to do to get a CO. This is what you have to do to get it up. I think once I kind of put in that, that camp, I uh, strayed a little bit from the the need of the applicant understanding what the dollar amount is and what their, what the liability is. And so I think that um, I would be in agreement with removing up to five hundred thousand design and construction costs.
Carol?
Yeah, I agree with that. That was one of my notes from last time and especially hearing that the cost is going to be right around there. Typically, we don't include a cap. So yeah, I'm in favor of removing the upper limit.
Shannon, can I ask Shannon a question? What ballpark, what do you, what do you see this costing? I mean, are we just jousting at windmills? Is it gonna be, is this something we even need to mess with?
I did do a small cost estimate exercise and it was around three fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Started making it up.
Thank you.
I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it as stated.
Five hundred?
Yeah.
Mike?
Thank you. Um, my concern on this one is scope creep. Right? That it just turns into, if it's in, if it's a blank check and it just turns into this project that's far beyond what she just talked about at three hundred fifty thousand. And I think we've all been around the block enough times to know that scope creep, whatever kind of remodel project you do can happen, which is why we want to have some cost certainty, which is why we're okay with the five hundred thousand based on the three fifty that, you know, we'd expect there to be some, for it to potentially cost more than that. Um, and so we're not trying to hide from a, from a public benefit. We're trying to create some certitude in terms of what we expect to spend to deliver a public benefit. And I can't, I don't want to be in a space where five hundred thousand turns into five million because all of a sudden, somebody thinks there should be a roundabout there that requires Ski Hill Road to get, you know, regraded down to, you know, by ten percent downward on, as it, as it approaches. And I'm not saying anybody. as it, as it approaches. And I'm not saying anybody here would do that, but you know, I, I have to hedge against that kind of scope creep. And so, um, if we want to take the five hundred out, then that's fine, as long as we more precisely define the scope of the project. Um, as opposed to just, and so that's why I'm fine with five hundred thousand as it's written here today, because I think that gets it done. If we want to go to get, get rid of five hundred, then we're going to want to tighten up the definition of what it is we're going to do so that we don't have this be a blank check. So, I don't care. You guys can pick, but that would be my condition if you want to get rid of five hundred is that I need just, I need to know what the scope is. I need, I need certainty on one side, the other, either dollars or the scope of the project. I think the dollars does it, but.
Think we could tighten up the scope definition a little. It's, it's pretty good now. I, you know, but if you want a little more detailed, sure.
I think that's great. And I think the, I mean, on the flip side of scope creep is cost creep, which is what we all deal with all the time. And so I think, um, if we can get rid of the five hundred thousand and tighten up the definition of scope, I think we have, we have the votes to go that direction.
My motivation is fairness to community. I, this is one of the most contentious pieces for many in the community. And, um, to cap it, I think is, is the wrong thing to do for the community. So.
Yeah.
But I, I'm fine tightening up the scope a little bit.
We'll get the, we'll get the, um, back of the napkin work that Shannon did. Um, talk with our attorney and talk with Mark and Chris and tighten up the post language that tightens up so that we have some level of, um, assurance on what we're expected to do and what we're expecting to do.
Long, as long as our staff feels like it captures the spirit of everything.
Trying to, yeah, would do that. So, on that two, three, totally, yep. I'm supportive of you guys, your direction on that.
Okay, great. Next.
Five D can be a quick discussion. I disagree with the six, ten, and we can move forward from there. Cause I know I'm alone. Um, five point two D, I mean, five point three. I think that the site improvements on parcel A, parcel one, um, should be done prior to CO of parcel two. And my reasoning is, you know, we're talking water quality, time's of the essence there. And we're talking safety with the lighting. Time is also of the essence there. If we're going to CO um, parcel two and have people living in parcel two and they're going to be walking across that dark parking lot. Um, I, I don't think it's a heavy lift for the applicant. I just think that the timing wise, um, we want to get that work done. Um, sooner or later.
I can't speak for Vale, and because this is, this would be revert to their ownership. But maybe there's room in the middle on that one where we say like within a year of the CO of parcel two kind of thing.
Just, yeah, as long as it's.
I get, I get the idea of.
More urgent than parcel four.
I get it. And so, so if we could, this was, this is the language that they propose. Think that if we could, parcel two is, you know, really a couple of years from now in terms of site planning and then building it, et cetera. And so you just add a year on the CO side of it. I think that that will, we'll get that done. You know, that compromise.
I'm willing to compromise with that. For everyone else is, I don't want to be like, wow. Six point one B four, Jeffrey, that is page.
Yeah, I know it is.
Okay. Page thirteen seventy seven in our packet.
Okay.
Roman numeral four.
I got you.
I, I would like to see us add, and I said this before, um, language and and no other um, expenses, charges, rents, you know, anything. I, I just want the rent, I mean, it's more than I wanted to agree to. I compromised and agreed to it. I want to be assured that it's gross rent in perpetuity, that there's not going to be another fee, you know, the insurance went up. We're going to charge a fifty dollar a month insurance premium fee on top of the rent that we already agreed to.
So your thing?
The rent's the rent and there's nothing's going to make it stop.
As it, it, um.
That's what we're committing to the applicant that they're going to get their rent as defined, but there's just that little piece of ambiguity for the tenant in my opinion.
I said this last time, I'm, I'm fine with agreeing with the control, the relatively predictably controllable costs. Sewer utilities, things like that. What is not predictable on any level is fire insurance these days. And that is of significant concern. I know the town has, through the SIRS, has opportunities to get lower property insurance rates, but this, I can't have this turned into, you know, twenty thousand dollar premium turns into a two million dollar premium on the building. And that, that's, as, as a community, I don't know how we handle that relative to the relative to rent controls and, and things like that. How does AMI speak for the cost of fire insurance? It doesn't. So I'm, what I'm trying to commit to is to have it be three percent to fulfill what you're asking, but just to have the latitude to say that if something crazy happens with property insurance, we've got the right to recover that money. Cause this, I can't have this turn into a, a money pit. And then this insurance is of concern. I'm sure it is for your buildings too.
Is there any way to specify that?
Some carve out that I'm asking for on this is the, is the, is the hazard insurance on the building. I find living with every other element of rent control on this. I just.
Yeah. Mike and I, I'm not here to debate it with you, but I will make one counterpoint. I think for me, the developer is important. You guys are important. The employee is more important. I think they're the lifeblood of this community and I think we should make decisions based on their ability to live here. And I'd stick to what I'm asking for.
I, I just, I fear in the context of privately developed workforce housing that if there is not latitude on the property insurance side of things, you're not going to see people stepping up to do workforce housing for our employees. I agree with you. This town doesn't work. My business doesn't work. Yours doesn't work without employees. I a hundred percent agree. But, but if, if property insurance to protect the building isn't part of a rent structure, then you, you're not going to see people stepping up to fund these buildings. It's just too much of an uncertain risk. So, my goal is not to have exorbitant rents, it's to be affordable. Just don't want to be in a money pit, so.
Yeah, I, to me, employees come before profitability. So, we'll just.
Is there a, is there a amount of property insurance that is included in this rent or you would immediately be?
No, no, it is included today. I'm just saying, and we can, I can look at, I could propose like a safeguard trigger for us that if it increased by X percent or something like that. Um, but that's, I'm, I, we're seeing two, three, four, five X increases on property insurance right now. And that's the concern. It's not predictable on any level and where utilities are.
All right. So, um, how, are people fine with it as written or do you want, um, as proposed, which is, um, that it, that, you know, no matter the property insurance cost, that, that would be absorbed? Or is there a middle ground maybe with the trigger?
Yeah, I mean, I will. This is going to be a new building and it's going to have all the whistles and buzzes fire wise, I'm, I'm assuming. Um, i- if we could have something a little bit more specific, if, if, you know, if in, insurance increases more than thirty percent over any given year or something. I mean, I'm not going to bandy about the numbers because I don't know, but something like that, that just kind of limits it to insurance and limits it to some sort of astronomical increase. But hell, we just were talking about it earlier about Gold Camp, you know, it's like triple the, the, the insurance. So, I don't know, I, um, I, I can feel the pain on this one, but, uh, so yeah, I, I don't want to, I, I don't want to leave it as is, but I'd like to make it more spec- specificity on how, how it will work.
Carol?
Yeah, I appreciate the compromise Mike suggested.
Okay, Jay?
You know, um, contextually, I, I think about it, most leases in town are triple net. And so like, you know, you have a base rent and then you just pay whatever.
Residential.
I'm sorry?
Commercial is residentialism.
Okay, um, and, and so I look at this going, I understand that you don't have the ability to raise rents when your costs, um, escalate. And so I would love to see Kirsten and Mark and, and the applicant get together and try to find a way to protect the residents of these, uh, of these dorm style units so that they're not being passed on, uh, insurance costs from day one, or if it goes up as, you know, normal, but if there is a, um, un- unusual or unpredictable event that occurs. And maybe that is, maybe that's two hundred percent increase is the trigger. I don't know. But I would love to see that just get, I'm not going to try to, uh, form the language here, but, uh, I think that's something that is best to staff and the applicant.
Todd?
I think Jay's approach is thoughtful. I like that.
Me too.
Uh, six one, um, the concept of bonding around the roundabout, I fully am supportive of. I get you need protection there. I'd just like to have a little better language where there needs to be a compelling reason for it.
Six point one what? Sorry.
Oh, six point one D. So, just, just a little bit of language saying there, you know, if if there's a compelling reason or, or, or acts out of the control of the applicant or you know, we all want urgency. I'm sure the applicant wants urgency too. So I'm sure we can come to some language and bring some comfort there. Just something that you can point out when you're talking to your contractor and go, you need to hustle up, guys. Um, eight point one B. Boy. Um, I'd like a little more specifics around the BOEC space, square footage, on snow. Um, you know, the, 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 the things that have been promised previously. I'd just like a few more specifics in there other than, it's, it's pretty vague language right now. Again, thinking if we're dealing with a lion heart when it comes time to build this thing.
No problem.
Oh, I missed a really important one. Two, two point six. I'm very, very grateful for the Soul Center contribution. Um, the most important one in here or second most important one in here. I very, very grateful for that contribution. That's huge.
And I feel fortunate to be in the position to make that.
Well, thank you. Eight point one, oh, I just did that one. Eight point two C. That's fine that those parking spaces are inside in the parking structure. The BOEC's parking spaces are in the parking structure.
So it's at the top of page eighteen?
Okay, yeah.
Eight point two D. Yeah, I lost some hair reading this thing.
Me too.
Grant waivers? Of the engineering process? Is that what we're in?
Yeah. Um, did need to just state that the ramp mitig- the, uh, mitigation is, is prioritized in the order of one, two, three. So that, you know, to every extent possible, we're maximizing one before we go to two and maximizing two before we go to three. I think that's what we all understand, but it's not clear in this language to me that that's what's required. So it's, it's more of a language, you know, a little more specific.
Oh, yeah, it is in.
Pardon me?
F I.
Yeah.
Right?
Eight point two.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Is that this brung structures, that temporary structures? Yeah. Gee, I made this comment before, but I think we need to be specific in the size. We've, we've got some experience with having those around for a while in the past. Uh, just something to how many of them, what size? Even if it's general, you might not know the specifics of it now, but just to give carte blanche, um, ability to do whatever you want is concerning to me. It's, it's a little too loose. Eleven.
You want like a square footage number in there?
Well, that would be ideal. If you know already, you may or may not know.
I have to, I'd have to ask them because it's.
Or maybe define what you want to put in it, or just something that's a little tighter that future councils or, or this council for, four years from now can, can go, hey, this is what we agreed to and there's, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, scope creep, you know?
I, I get it. I just, I, I just want to know how you want me to define.
Well, square footage would be ideal, but you might not be to that point. Maybe what you're trying to put in there.
I don't know what they want to put in there. So, I, and they may not know right now what they want to put there too.
Brings me. That's part of my concern right there is that, that we're giving them a real open.
Yeah, they'll give us a bigger number then, right? They'll hedge bigger with square footage.
Yeah, let's, 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 if you could work with the applicant, try, or work with the staff and try to come up with some some definition or somebody else have an idea.
I was, I was just curious if you thought that, um, if the size or the duration was paramount? Like how long those can be around or exactly how big they are, um, if, or if it's both.
You're bringing a great point, Jay. I think it's both. And it's probably tied to CO or parcel four. In, in terms of duration.
Yeah, basically says that.
I think it was at one.
Yeah, it's tied to, it can't be there any greater than sixty days after the CO. And it really is, can't be there before they break ground.
Well, I mean, yeah, I feel like for me, it's less about the size because they're obviously going to do the minimum size possible since they're using.
Oh, it's pretty cheap square foot.
Yeah, at the end of the day, they're, what the term sheet is, six thousand square feet that they would buy inside the building from us. And so it should be cons- at least consistent for that. So.
Makes sense. That seems like the right number.
That seems like a reasonable thing to say right now, that the temporary structure would be no bigger than the permanent office space, six thousand square feet.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That works.
Tie it to the.
Yeah. Solves it.
Eleven point two. Um, it defines as, um, suitable to the applicant VSR I. I'd like to and, I'd like to add and the town of Breckenridge. So that we're all, it's suitable to all of us. This is in reference. In the density, it looks like.
Oh, yeah.
Where the density would go if we can't come to an agreement on the exercise.
Yeah. I love that. That's a great catch.
Um, eleven point three. Um, conceptually, I'm in agreement with that, um, but I would like to have some language in there that both parties will diligently work towards accomplishing that. And then exhibit nine. Of the parking lot and the lighting. Um, I thought we agreed that lighting, not just the east side, but the whole thing with that level of lighting that's on the east side. And again, this is, my concern here is safety.
Where are you at on this one, Dick?
Um, I'm going to it now. It's exhibit number nine.
Making me work my last few meetings.
So sorry.
It's page one seventeen, Jeffrey.
Okay, all right.
This shows, this was the original one we were looking at, but I thought we agreed to to carry that same lighting pattern over to the west side, just so that people walking across that parking lot late night to the new employee housing on parcel two had safe lighting to do so. Does anybody else remember that? I.
I don't remember what we agreed upon. I remember that.
That's what I remember. That's what I remember agreed upon, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I recall and it was just a discussion of could it be, you know, subdued and obviously dark sky compliant.
I think that's where that landed.
That's all I got. Are you sure? Yeah. Well, until we get to the annexation.
Alright, who else has something?
Well done, by the way. Well, well done. He really did your homework.
Okay, do you have one?
No, mine were all in public kind of hit and they covered those.
Yeah, so um. Where did we land with the um housing for the NRO kids? I feel like that language was still really loose. And um we were hoping that it could be improved. I can't remember where it is.
It's uh page thirteen, section six point one B.
Thank you.
Six.
Thank you very much. You must have known I was going here. Will offer any seasonal vacancy to local community nonprofit organizations for pending availability and subject to the owner master leasers. Lesser's reasonable discretion. So what I was hoping is that um. We could have any sort of assurance and I feel like this is um still very. Non-committal to the people who really just need any kind of commitment. And I know that there's been um an agreement with Vale for the last few years where they have. Helped NRO find, you know, a certain number of beds, I think in the. Summer in the hundred number of beds, um, but we know that they need around a hundred and twenty. And so I'm hoping, I know that this is one of those things that it's you negotiating. Not with yourself, but with Vale for us, but I feel like this is just. For Vale Resorts, it really shouldn't be a heavy lift. They've been doing it for the last three or four years and so they should know exactly. What we're hoping for and I just don't really um think that this language is strong enough. So is there anything you can tell me about?
Well, I, um, I understand. I think that. I understand what you're saying and I think that what they're trying to do is say if they've got summer employees that need to house, they, they come first and the whole workers come first kind of space. And so that's their hedge. Um, but I also think the intent of. This housing, to the extent that it's seasonal, is that we all want it to go first to the nonprofits and so. I think I said this two meetings ago, like I would take your suggestions on how we can tighten up the language, um, but. You know, no one's gonna, no one's gonna sign a forty-two week lease, right? They're gonna sign, and that's what we're, we're talking about a nine week window for the NRO. Um, so what, what I, what we could offer is a first sentence prior to that. And I, I don't know that it does much, but it, it talks about the intent, right? To get people on the same page and that would be that. It is the intent of this agreement for any seasonal vacancy to be offered. To Breckenridge based nonprofits for temporary housing needs, therefore, and then the balance of it goes forward. And so I just wanted to, you know, it's repetitive and I wanted to double down. But have an intent based statement that says this is what we're trying to accomplish and I understand that. And Vale understands the town is bringing some of the density, bringing some of the density for this housing to this parcel and so. You buy rights, the town, the community should have some jurisdiction on that and so. To the extent that it's available, I wanted to have an intent based statement that says this is what we're trying to accomplish. I. They just, they're just not going to be in this space. I wouldn't, if I were in their shoes, to say I can make a three year commitment or a two year commitment on this stuff, but. Think they're saying they get how this works. They want to continue to do it and it's their intent to continue forward, um, if it's possible and. Um, I, I'm trying.
When you think about the language and using an intent station, uh, an intent statement. I would encourage you to do exactly what you didn't think they'd be comfortable with and say a multi-year. Agreement uh is the intent because I think a lot of the heartburn comes to, to the NRO and to other. Rec nonprofits is that they don't secure housing until the day after their musicians get here or the day before. And I think it's that uncertainty that brings a lot of that heartache and so. If it's not a necessarily a binding statement, but to show that the intent is a multi-year seasonal. Um, whatever you said, you're very eloquent with it. I think that would go a long way to hearing some of our. Our needs of that they are looking to secure housing for their, their musicians or whoever it might be. Um, for duration and not have to fight for it every single summer.
One hundred percent get it and, you know, we can add. Intent based language that says just what you said right there, that it's possible that a multi-year agreement is preferable. Um, but I, they just need the latitude to say that they have. Whatever. I mean, I don't know what they build for summer activities up there. I don't know. I don't, I'm not in their business. I don't know what they need, what their employee housing needs are. Um, so we can, we can bake more intent. I, I know it, it doesn't have as, as much teeth as you want, but.
Well, it doesn't have any teeth, but um, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity because you brought up a good point that we're bringing density for the. Um, for the dorm units and we don't know exactly how they're going to end up using the dorm units. And so I'm just wondering if we can call out both the dorm units or at Breck Terrace because. If we have both of those and they've had, you know, at our disposal. And in the past, they've been able to provide a bunch of things at Breck Terrace. Um, I feel like that would be, give us more assurance because their. Um, summer, we know that their summer programming isn't going to change so drastically in the next.
I think it's safe to say that their intention is if it's available, because, because the NRO pays rent for these rooms.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it's their intention to be, continue to be, I don't think they, I don't think they do a very good job of, of. Of their PR with respect to things like this. The NRO, according to Dave, needed a hundred and thirty beds last year and. Vale gave them a hundred and eighteen of a hundred and thirty beds. I mean, they did. Their start, their track record is one of, of contributions and so. Um, I think that we can bake some more intent based language and there's just. I just can't get to where you ultimately want to be, I think, because that implies. Making a commitment to vacate those units for ten weeks a year and if they've got year round employees and leases, then they're not going to do that and they won't sign that. And so um, that's the rub with the, you get that, that's the rub with this and I wish it weren't the case, but.
Well, I do feel like NRO is gonna lose a little bit of assurance with um. You know, whatever language we finally get approved by Vale Resorts, but I also don't think it needs to be exactly what Vale Resorts language. Um, what they're proposing either, which is, you know, very non-committal. I feel like if we, if we could get closer to the language that shows. We've provided a number of housing units in the past. And I think maybe by talking about that it wouldn't only be at the new.
Sure.
Um, facility, but also at Breck Terrace, then we would at least have the assurance that they would continue.
I'll uh, I'll circle back with you on that.
Would it be worth reaching out to Vale ourselves? I mean, we're asking him to, to.
I'm the, I'm, I'm the conduit right between you.
Really, I think they really like us though.
Yeah.
Want Jeffrey mucking around with this?
I can go up there and crack some heads.
Well, in ser- uh, in all seriousness, we have to be careful of the experte contact, so we'll have staff work with Mike on that.
Jeffrey do well down in Brentville, wouldn't he?
If, if we hold this off for two more months, then you can go up there. Alright, anything else?
Kelly, there was language saying that the work, um, if the annexation agreement didn't go through, that the workforce would be in town. Or correct?
I believe that's how it reads. Yeah, in the upper blue, then, not, not necessarily on town land.
But I thought it said in the town of Breck.
That's what I, and I was trying to bring it up, but then I thought I saw it on the last thing that we were talking about.
If it does say that, I don't want it to. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to target on my back saying, Dudek needs to go buy a parcel town, a land in the town limits. As opposed to Airport Road in the county that services the same. It's just, it's just not inside the town limits. I, that's, that's the distinction I want is because I just can't have, I can't get.
If we're gonna say upper blue, then I would like to have it say on a transit route. You know, I'm okay on Airport Road, something like that, but I wouldn't want to be in Blue River or, you know, at Farmer's Corner.
Seven at that point, you know, like.
Has to be on existing transit routes.
So you guys will.
But I hear. Town of Breck proper, that's pretty.
Has some parameters on it. Like.
Down to Breck until we get the annexation, so.
Okay.
And hopefully this is all.
Um, given the number of changes that need to be made, we'll pull this from tonight and bring it back to you for first reading and another date.
Right, Nate.
In section eleven two, I think.
Sound good, Mike? You heard that?
I guess so. Thanks.
This level of change be made between first reading and second reading? No.
It's too much for you to at, vote affirmatively or not tonight?
Gotcha.
And, and make those kind of changes in between.
Good.
I, I think with, with that being said, though, it will be important that we. We get to a level of comfort at the next one to have time to have it adopted really at that. You know, have the, the backup meeting for second reading before we have a change in the makeup of the council.
Yeah, I think we're, I mean, I think we're there. We, I think Dick had a lot of great changes tonight.
Well, most of mine were wording clarifications, really.
Well, and just one other thing, we have a very important notice requirement that's different than other legislation that we have to comply with. So we can't be making substantive changes prior to those notices going out.
In relation to development.
Yeah, so.
Okay, alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Do we need a bathroom break? Actually legislative, but.
Let's get all the way through. We're gonna do the resolution, resolution to adopt the three mile plan. Oh, I'm sorry.
I can handle this.
Oh, you're just staying on.
I'm just staying.
This housekeeping item?
Housekeeping, yeah.
This truly is housekeeping, Jeffrey. Yeah, um. So, uh, per the state statutes, every year we're supposed to. Um, adopt our three mile plan area, which in our case comprises our comprehensive plan. Coupled with the land use guidelines, all the land use districts. So that's what this resolution does. And um, really, where it comes into play is if we were an annexed property. We need to make sure to show that the three mile plan area has been identified and that property is included in it. Which, for example, in Trada, we have a land use district for it. It's on land use district five right now. Um, and um, that would be in, included in this, so. Pretty much the formality we need to go to through on an annual basis.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions?
Nah, it's basic, like the BGV thing, just basically.
Just like BGV. Alright, thanks, Mark. Alright, we're gonna take a five minute break. Is everybody ready?
Yes.
Then to public projects update, please, Shannon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I've included some brief updates similar to what you've seen in the past couple meetings, just to keep us on track for updates on the capital projects. I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Alright, any questions? Um, I had a question about food and delivery. Did it go up to two million because we asked for Saturdays?
It was the addition. We just got the updated budget. When I wrote this, it was an estimate.
Yeah.
We got the updated budget from one oh six and they're one point nine and change.
Okay.
It was an additional cart, additional staffing to cover Saturdays and holidays.
Great, I just wanted to make sure.
Another cart.
Add another cart. At our request slash direction, as well as back to the Saturdays.
I think that'll help some of the restaurateurs. I don't know what you think, Jay, but I think that was a concern with some.
I don't think it will go to waste, like it'll.
We've been meeting with them. I met with them yesterday. They're working really hard to get this launched this summer.
Um, one of the things that, um, one of those lines I was trying to a distributor. A smaller distributor this morning and they were asking if they were, like, they, they're not aware of the opt-in program. And they didn't know whether it called you or one oh six. I directed them to one oh six. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, so not to you.
I will direct them to the.
Oh, great, okay.
Yourself phone number, actually.
You know, on the Schoonover deconstruction, we have, when we do stuff like that, do we try to recycle or recycle? Any of the building materials? Does anyone want anything from Schoonover?
To be determined, but yes, this project is hopefully to keep a lot of this out of the landfill.
Okay.
Great, glad to hear it. Anything else?
I'm just looking forward to the Kingman Breakfast sign the meeting with.
Site meeting yet. You're supposed to call me.
Well, they, they just get the rendering. I saw the rendering today and I, I, I said pretty much leave it up to me. I'll.
This is your baby. This is, this is.
Yeah, like, exactly. Cool.
Alright, thank you. Alright, mobility.
Mobility. I saw the, the wooden bus in my neighborhood again today. The Purple Road is the wooden bus.
Everybody? Um, yeah, we launched the new transit app. It's going very well throughout town, some big ridership as well. Do you have any questions about the packet we put into that?
Any questions about mobility?
Fantastic ridership, wow.
March is looking.
Well, really, the whole year of March, for sure.
What's your name?
Case.
How's it?
Judd.
Judd, okay, alright.
Sorry, I should have introduced you. I thought it was awesome that the new transit app is gonna be incorporated into the Breck E-Ride. That seems so cool. And then you'll never have to drive again.
Yeah, all things transit. Yeah, great, yeah.
It'll still be the E-Ride app, but you just go through ours.
Links right in. Yeah, that's great. I think that'll be awesome. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Good numbers.
Alright, sustainability. Ooh, Jesse had a big week. She came prepared with it even.
Came with stuff.
Um, Mayor Pro Time Council, good afternoon. Um, we were light on staff last week for a variety of reasons. So the, the memo and the packet was pretty light, but I'm happy to take any questions. And then I did just want to um present the council with, uh, this was in your packet a couple of weeks ago, but this is our um. Bicycle friendly community um gold certification that we receive. We do this every three years. Um, the report card that we get uh makes recommendations on how we can improve bike infrastructure and safety. Um, but this just helps in, enhance and improve um our, our mobility efforts here in town. And then um last week we were awarded first place um at a global uh, uh conference in. In Berlin, um, and this is to recognize again our mobility efforts here in Breckenridge. Um, the story we told was around more boots and bikes, less cars. Um, and included the E-Ride changes that we've made to transit, paid parking was part of that strategy. Um, and all of that, we, we got recognized um as a mountain resort community leading the way in mobility. So congratulations and thank you guys for your support um to help make this happen, so.
Great job.
There we go.
On the bike recommendation, do they provide like recommendations?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Teddy's not here, but I don't think we've received our final report card yet, but. Um, and they do a lot of outreach. um and they do a lot of outreach with the community. They do a major uh survey of people who do ride and ask them their opinions, but then they also have best practices and standards. And so they issue a report card that's really a good checklist that we can be striving toward.
More jumps.
With us?
When we get it, yeah, we'll share it, sure.
Have we been gold in the past?
We've been gold for the last, uh, um, so we actually took this over from open.
How many years have we been gold? Could you remind me?
Yeah.
Um, so we do have one level to go, platinum. Um, and so we'll, you know, with the redevelopment of Airport Road and some of the other work, uh, we'll be looking to really improve bike infrastructure and try to achieve that platinum.
Great.
Cool. Well done.
Yeah. Thank you very much to you and your team.
Congratulations.
Nice work.
It's really paid off.
All right. Housing and childcare update. Do we have? Anyone who's interested in doing that?
Anyone, anyone?
I would say Dick. Housing and childcare update?
Yeah, any questions on the report?
No, all right.
And we did have a meeting today, so that um report will be in your next packet. Oh, there's Lori.
I mean, they are uh, the housing staff is.
I don't think there's any question.
Fire.
Does anyone have any questions for Lori from our housing packet?
Even maybe, when is Larkspur CEO-ish?
Uh, May first.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, they are, well, on track for May first.
When did the?
Two months ago.
What about the the uh patent of the name change of of uh, did we come up with a? Altaverti, yeah.
We asked them to check that.
So we have to change Altaverti's name?
Yeah.
According to Gorman, um, Altaverte has been challenged and um um by somebody that has a trademark on Alta.
Could you take out the E?
Altavert.
Already?
Alter is what's protected. Alp, yeah.
About that. Um, they were quite in, I mean, they are under a little bit of a a time crunch in terms of starting to launch the marketing around phase two and then having to change a lot of documents um for phase one, including, you know, all sorts of lender documents and all sorts of things. Um, so it's, they were um, you know, focused on the process to get the changes all implemented and they don't, you know, they were open to looking at a few names that we gave them last week. And um when they ran all of those, they said none of those would pass. Um, and we had some names we liked. Yeah.
Of course, don't don't people kind of do Google search and to see if the name they're going to call their project is?
We're the ones that gave them Altaverte. Um, we didn't run a trade.
No, but I don't do that for a living.
No, I don't even think we thought about doing it. We don't do it for our projects and.
I named a restaurant Sukas and got challenged.
Did you, I mean, is there any way we could kind of just humiliate this, kind of reach out to the Altavert, the people that uh that wrote us and say, listen, come on?
Um, I I I got the impression that um Gorman needed to move on and really could not sort of um go without a name.
These and this is stored, like they were pretty serious about not using that name because they are um a company that does multi-unit dwelling units. So it's not only is it's their name, but it's also the same product. More product.
Okay.
Good luck with that.
So hassle to change it now. Um, I guess next time we name a project, we'll think about that in advance.
It called Gold Camp.
No, thank you.
Anything else for Lori? Thank you, Lori. All right, next up we have the open space update and.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Time and Council. Included in the packet is our open space update, including the draft BOSAC meeting minutes from February, the twenty twenty-three State of the Open Space Report and the twenty twenty-four project list. Um, just a couple of highlights from the project list. We're really excited about a couple of accessible trails. We're continuing to work on um over the course of this summer, including the BOEC trail, some retrofitting at the Troll Stegan Trail, the Riley Dredge um Bridge bump outs, and also a short accessible trail to the Keystone Drill, which will be installed kind of near the B and B Trailhead this summer. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ann?
At the BOEC, up up at the F and D, is that where you're talking?
Oh, up by the Griffith Lodge. The for the BOEC project.
Yeah, by the Griffith Lodge, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
I was really happy to see how many um kind of maintenance and upkeep projects were on here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one request I would make is if we could get maps of projects. It's just difficult in the table to know exactly where we're talking about. So in the future, if we could just maybe have a sheet that has a map for each of these, I think it would be easier to review.
Okay, absolutely.
But I liked the amount of detail and I think um I think we're heading in the right direction.
You you know, I know the the discussion with about uh kind of changing some of the verbiage, softening some of the verbiage that Duke brought up. Yeah, I just hope that, you know, anything, anything that's done that drastically, I think council needs to weigh in on that as far as, you know, etiquette, suggestions and softening in it, less a fair recreation, so. Didn't go, it didn't seem to go anywhere, but I do think that's something that uh, something that drastic needs to be kind of vetted seriously.
I did notice, I meant to send you a sign, Jeffrey, or a picture, but I saw a sign that said um, I was on Preston Loop and it encouraged bikers to go one direction, which, you know, I thought was really great. It didn't say bikers aren't welcome up this way. It just said bikers, this is your route.
Trying to encourage better flow up there.
I thought that was great. Anything else?
Yeah, thanks for the trails plan. I'm always amazed at the number of visitors at Cucumber Gulch compared to French Gulch. And yeah, just thanks for sharing that update. Lots of good work there. Keep it up.
Ann for the dog picture.
Sure. The dogs.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann. Um, committee reports. We had Summit Stage Advisory Board, Social Equity and Police Advisory. Any comments, questions? Great, it's good because the only one that can answer them is Dawn, so. Move on. Um, all right, events committee. So um, John's not here, so I'm going to go ahead and just take any comments or questions. But I did want to draw your attention to the con um to the conversation about changing the Brecktown Party Date. Um, last year it was about the second week in June, um, which it did snow. Um, snow, rain mix, delightful. But um this year they're proposing actually, so for several reasons, um, there are, you know, other events and we don't want to have competing events. Um, there's a Pride event and just lots of things going on in town for that second week. It's not all on the same day, but there was a discussion at events committee to move, um, I believe it's June fourth, but I can't. Did anyone see that date?
I think it moved June fourth, yeah.
Should move it earlier.
Yeah, move it earlier to June fourth, yeah, which I think does a, so um it's on the last day of school, which was something that I think most people thought was a benefit. You know, it's not necessarily a family friendly thing, but that would mean that a lot of people are in town for it, which I think is a benefit. Um, it doesn't compete with other things that are going on and it keeps it. I mean, I think the other thing about having it when it's on an event heavy weekend or during that um week right before is that we do tend to get more people up from the front range. So moving it to beginning of June, when the weather's not as predictable, pretty much ensures it's going to be locals only.
Yeah.
So anyway, they asked me to bring that here and make sure that that was okay and supported by this group.
Yeah, that's a great change.
Yeah, I defer to their opinion on that, yeah.
Yeah, Lucy seemed pretty confident that it was a good change.
I like it.
Okay.
We'll still do the nonprofit roundtable or.
Yes, yeah. And I think um, I mean, I think we kind of kicked that off last year and hopefully we'll have even more. Um, but that's definitely the intent that we would continue to have, get people involved that way. All right, so June fourth, mark your calendars. Any other questions on events? Okay. All right, Blue River Pathways. Shannon, Elena, Tori's here.
Uh huh, we got extra seats, so Elena can sit out.
I thought Elena was going to be in the cheer section.
Got this.
Nobody puts Elena in the cheer section.
That high school hockey team.
I know. I just really wanted to get our stuff. But we'll be happy with that.
All right. Hello, everybody. Again, to discuss our draft master plan for the Blue River Pathways project. Um, at our last meeting, when we presented the the draft master plan, council asked that we bring back two areas, the Ice House um lot area as well as the Sawmill area. Um, today we have the Ice House. We advanced some concepts given the direction we received last time and we wanted to review that with you. Um, I'm going to give it over to Norris Design to run us um through the presentation.
So Bly did agree to um having his parking lot be one way?
No, um, we have not made any changes with Bly's property. I'm still investigating if there are current easements for the pathway that is currently there. I had a great meeting with him and his wife, Pat. We met for over an hour. And I'm tasked with going to the courthouse to see if I can find any background because he didn't have any either and our files are a little bit light. So this is all conceptual and be based on a partnership.
The back, the one going behind this building.
Mm-hmm.
Because just the way we have the parking aligned, it would say to most people that that's one way.
It functions that way now.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been drawn that way in the past with the angled parking. We think it flows a little bit better. But um absolutely, his parking lot could stay the way it is, but we will need easements on the west side of his parcel if they're not existing to move forward with it.
Where's his property lines that go all the way to the river?
The county assessor's map shows it at the back of building. The original plot work shows it to the river.
The next one, Shannon, there we go.
Um, so we.
Yeah, yeah, it's line work, though. Oh, this is you?
The county assessor shows the back of building.
Just driving.
Goes to the river. I need to go investigate if there was any land transfer or easements. But at this time, they are happy for me to show this as concepts on the master plan and we'll work together for some mutual benefits and in the future.
And no loss of spaces on their lot. Importantly.
And we cut the alley on their portion wider.
Right.
Making me skip ahead to page eight. Going back.
Any, any other general questions we want to hit before we get going?
There's another spot, too, that we can dive into questions as well.
No, let's let's have your presentation. Wow.
Sorry, I didn't mean to do that. He's been doing this all night.
I'll try to control it. Yeah, you already distracted me, it's fine. Um, uh, sorry, so Tori Dalla with Norris Design. I'm gonna kind of take you guys to the presentation. We'll have a lot of great conversation today. Uh, first off, we just wanted to just review our goals for the project, taken from the community goals. Um, obviously, we have all of your wonderful community goals, the more boots and boots and bikes, less cars, environmental stewardship, balanced year-round economy and our authentic character for the project, for the master plan. We have our safety, connectivity, environment, placemaking, community engagement. Just wanted to highlight those because, you know, this is our North Star. This is what guides us with all our decision-making. So um we also thought it would be a good idea just to talk about why we have a master plan, why, why do we do master plans? So council directed us to do a master plan in August of twenty twenty-three. Um, they really help us lay out multi-phase projects and make sure that we're um designing cohesively and taking those project goals through every step of the project. Um, and they're a really good tool to make sure that we show design and how it could progress and thing and solutions that could happen, but it doesn't mean that they're necessarily, you know, set in stone and that's the only way they could be implemented. Um, most, if not all, grant applications require a master plan like this, especially with public input as part of the project, just like we have here. Um, and they're really just a great tool to use for all our future design um decision-making. There's other projects that are going to happen um around this project that'll help, knowing this master plan and knowing what, you know, the current goals are and what's, you know, planned here, at least conceptually, will help make decisions later on when other projects are proposed adjacent to the river. All right, so last time, what we heard, you guys had some questions and I know it was quick last time and we can dive in more this time. But for the Gold Pan Alley segment, so the one um, the river adjacent to the parking garage, just to describe where we are, and the Sawmill Lot. Um, you guys were interested in the Uller Plaza and how that's going to design and how that's going to work. Um, and what's going on with the circulation in Sawmill Lot. Um, also, um, you noted that you didn't want to see a lot of reduction in parking there because it is employee parking and not paid parking in that location. Again, that we want to understand that connection, that east-west connection to Main Street from the garage through the Wellington Lot. And then um this is the next step, this is the next area we're going to look at. So today we're looking at the Ice House. We haven't touched the Sawmill Lot or Gold Pan Alley segment yet. Um, but uh, but we will next, and I think a great, this is a great opportunity to plan a a site visit. Just going to put that out there now. It's like, it's later in the presentation, too. Uh, for the Ice House LA segment, we were concerned with the quantity of bridges that were being shown and how much cover we had over the river. Um, we weren't as concerned losing paid parking in that location, um, so that was good, and especially with our proximity to the parking garage and um having availability there. Uh, you guys wanted to see and understand what a can delivered section of trail would look like there, so we provided a section, uh, conceptual section for that set, for that area. And then um we discussed that we were okay moving the materials management building there. We just, if anything were to become per uh permit, we'd obviously want to be really close in contact with the adjacent uh businesses in that alley. And then um you directed us to do a conceptual layout and that's what the exciting thing that we're going to talk about today. Is there any other thoughts or questions or other areas that you guys wanted us to to discuss today on the master plan? And we have that pulled up as well, if we need to go to a certain page or anything, or um we can just talk about the Ice House today, Gold Pan Alley next, and you guys can think about that and if there's another area we want to deep dive on.
Thank you so much for reminding us of our conversation last time because I feel like I'm all up to speed now with what we said last time.
We're here for you.
I have listened and.
Well, is it, are they like, that's like kind of a park?
Yeah, so they're green or they're orange.
Yeah, green or orange, are they parks?
Uh, it depends.
Huh?
He's looking.
Looking at this graphic. So this is a, this is um kind of our, yeah, notation of uh major destinations.
Alliances.
And and, yeah, and like plazas, things like that.
All right, all right. And they, the colors, do they mean anything?
Well, they do. In the master plan, we have a whole, um, so this is just a graphic taken from an overall one of our maps, but in the master plan, we have a legend next to each one of those maps that identify what they are.
So we'll know later.
No, the problem is, is that he's, I, this was my comment too, but there's in the memo, there's a um screenshot and there's just no accompanying legend.
Yeah, that's my fault. I was thinking you could reference back to the master plan. I can link the master plan document.
Oh, yeah.
And memos moving forward, so it'd be easier. I I took one page and didn't import the legend.
I got you. I got you.
Which was problematic and we'll fix that in the future.
Actually, yeah, and just for ease, just links to the whole master plan so we can go back and forth.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
I mean, I can find the master plan, but not super quickly.
I think I have it at home.
Okay, um.
I've got it.
Is everybody ready? I can can kind of guide us through the concept. Does that sound like a plan?
It's great.
All right, so we'll go from north to south. So, um, crossing Ski Hill Road from the Gold Pan Alley and the Schoonover Living Lab area. We um, immediately enter onto that cantilever trail section. This is the tightest portion of uh, this area of the trail. This is an eighteen-foot section, so we can have both pedestrians and bikes here. That's a six-foot pedestrian trail and then two six-foot um, bike lanes. So nice and wide, mu- much safer um, when we have multi-use happening in that location. We adjusted the parking lot in front of the Bly building a little bit, having angled parking, but we kept the exact same amount of spaces. We kept a wider alley um, adjacent to that, so that portion of the alley can still be two-way. Um, just trying to be mindful and respectful of our neighbors. And then we also still um, provided a pedestrian connection from the Bly building to the newly proposed uh, picnic area or gathering space. The star locations, this is for you, Jeffrey, are public art spots. Um, are opportunities. We have some new landscape, couple of seating walls around there, but a nice area to hang out and be adjacent to the trail and to the river. Moving down south a little bit, we um, reorganized the ice house lot. We did lose some spaces, but um, it's still very efficiently parked. Um, and we did move the tr- the median that's existing there over to, to allow for space for this trail to get through here and for us to have some nice gathering spaces and really celebrate the river in this section. Um, we do have an eighteen-foot alley, which is a little bit wider than we would need for a, a one-way. Um, so, but we, we did tighten it up a little bit there. Um, so less about two-way vehicular traffic in the alley for that portion. Uh, moving a little bit, down a little bit, thank you. What we did here is, um, last time when we talked, we heard about the, you know, too many bridges, too many bridges for this section and covering up the river. There is an existing bridge across from what is now castaways there. Um, it is an older bridge, it is covered, it does block our view corridor and I question the, you know, accessibility of it, especially in the east side of the river. It's um, rather steep paving section. So I think this is a really good opportunity to um, still provide connection to the other side for pedestrian, both pedestrians and bikes. Um, by redoing a bridge or taking out that bridge and replacing it with a multi-use bridge for both bikes and pedestrians. We're really only walking another, less than fifty feet um, than where we were um, from the old bridge connection. So it's, it's not, it's not too um, encumbersome for sure. And I think it would be much easier accessibility-wise, honestly, to cross that bridge.
The old bridge?
So, um, do you see just above number ten, Jeffrey, where those boulders are, right there, that's.
Use your cursor.
Yeah, right there, that's where the bridge um, was. And we have it dashed on the, on the CAD plan too. We could pull that up if you want.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's on here too.
Oh, okay. Question on the um, with pedestrians to the west and bicycles to the east on that multi-use trail? Are they gonna be crossing? Cause aren't most of the pedestrians coming from Main Street and gonna have to cross the bike path to get to the pedestrian side? I mean, we've had, had a lot of comments about the in conflict of, of them crossing each other in that alley.
Are you asking like, should we flip?
Should we flip it?
Have the bike. I think that you could go either way. I think that it's, it's easier for a pedestrian to stop and wait for bikes to go by. Um, but the thought process there was that you're walking slower and then can enjoy the river. And we have a feeling like pedestrians would stop along the edge of the, of the trail to um, hang out by the river. And we didn't want that to conflict with bikes moving through.
And, and so in general, bikes are on the right.
Yeah, if you're heading north, bikes are on the right.
Yeah, it's probably, we're gonna hear about one way.
I think there's an argument for either my, my, I think our worry was, you know, especially in that cantilever section and, and, and really throughout anywhere along the river, we're gonna have pedestrians stopping. Even in the section north here, you have just the most amazing views of the mountains and then you're adjacent to the river. We know that pedestrians are gonna stop and we, we don't want them encouraged to be in the bike lane.
You know, those things like one, eight, five, those little, those round things like gazebos or something. Just to the south of the Bly building, you know, that's a very shady area. And, and would we landscape that to kind of get some sun in? Cause you know, the Bly building blocks the sun, you know, that's to the north. And then, have you looked at that? Is, so you know, kind of looked at in real time that, that will function?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's nice mid-morn, I mean, I've. Yeah. A sandwich and sat out there and eating it. You know, early afternoon, mid-mor- you know, late morning, early afternoon is nice, but you're right, Jeffrey, as the days, as it goes on, it gets.
Well, especially in the afternoon, it's, the sun's really blocked by Riverfront Lodge over here. Um.
And in the morning, it seems to be blocked by Eric's building till it rises above the building.
Yeah, it's definitely like a lunchtime destination to be sure. And, and those are, those are trees um, instead of gazebos. So we don't have any structures planned in that area.
Thoughts just compatible uses with the picnic area right by potentially the waste management.
Right, so what we, what, yeah, I, I understand that for sure. Um, we, yeah, we would want to have like quite the landscape buffer between there. Um, we just felt like that was probably the best location without talking to the adjacent businesses yet. We didn't want to locate it too far away. And I know that you guys have a whole plan to make this a system, but we just wanted to make sure we located it um, for now.
That location also gives easier access for the large trash vehicles to come in off the alley, turn in there, grab it and get out, rather than circulating like they do now through the entire parking lot. But.
But we shouldn't be really designing it for large trash vehicles because that's not a long-term thing. I just wanna throw that out there.
Yeah, I mean, this is all conceptual. It's showing one spot that could work.
Is it?
Because ideally want to move it away from where it is now to let some of the bike and pet function. So this is one place where it could work, but you're right, if we're down to smaller vehicles, no vehicles, then we don't really know what that could look like in the future.
Don't, I totally get it. I just don't want that, the big truck to drive the locations.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Part of the thinking.
The overall goal of the concept is that we have this really pretty limited physical space where we have to accommodate all these different functions and create a nice place along the river. And so it's starting to show us how that can happen while not having to, you know, change any of, you know, there's, all the buildings are still there. You know, we've moved around pavement markings and one-ways and things like that and looked at how the river is accessed, but um, this is a way that you can kind of get all the things that we want to accomplish in this location.
I think the other thing about that location too, Carol, is that the previous location completely blocks your view corridor down this whole section where it is right now. And so when thinking about that, when we were trying to relocate it, that was kind of the best spot um, that allowed for enough buffer where we could, you know, block some view of it, but also wasn't hindering the real shot down the river.
What about the existing vegetation there? Like there's some big, big trees there.
Yeah, there are some really big, big trees there and I would love to, if we had that surveyed, which we tell right now. Um, but what we could do is we could get those trees surveyed and we could try to plant around them if we can.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, absolutely. I, who doesn't love trees?
South of the bridge, um, on the west side, will that flip so it's pedestrian along the riverside? See what I'm saying?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I did want them to be able to turn down castaways, but I definitely see what you're saying there, Todd.
Uh, just a thought to look at. Depending on what sort of improvements go along the riverfront there, if you're trying to get like pedestrian engagement along the river there.
Yeah, we could definitely make a, you know, make a, a pavement marking there for, to cross over towards the riverside. Especially since just south of here, we're gonna um, meet up with the pedestrian bridge that goes to Blue River Plaza. That's a great note.
And then it gets real busy.
Yeah.
That's kind of why, um, and, and this was a great comment from Shannon, when we were going through the concept, we actually stopped the bike path a little bit earlier than we initially planned, right by where the bike parking is, so we can really emphasize that dismount zone before you get to Blue River Plaza, cause we know that's been an issue in the past.
Materials building bigger to accommodate um, compost?
Right now, we drew the squares the same size, just as a jumping off point. As we develop the plans for trash recycling, compost will.
I mean, I think just.
Right-size everything as we move forward.
For design, I'm guessing it's gonna have to be bigger to get compost into it.
Yeah, well, well, it's flexible. We're just trying to represent it at this point. We'll follow all that very closely.
Something to keep in mind.
For sure.
Hey Shannon, just so that we're on the same page here, the time horizon for something like this, is it like six to twelve months or like five years, five to ten years?
The second one. Um, right now, you know, we're working on, we have a grant to start some of the design on these bridges. Once we uh, feel comfortable with, these are the locations we want to look at, so that design period would be a couple of years. And then hopefully these are pipeline projects for additional grants. Often, when we get funded for design, we could get funded for the capital construction. So I would say for the heavy infrastructure here, we're looking at a five-year at the earliest.
Right, so a lot of these uh, picnic tables, bike parking, trash enclosures are, are pretty much just placeholders at the moment. There's no definitive plans of the.
Just placeholders. And we could, you know, pull off some of the easier things sooner. But things like the cantilevered trail and the bridges are definitely more like five years out.
And what do you, what is getting sacrificed in this rendition compared to what we have now?
Money.
Good point. The space we took was the delivery zone on the east side of the landscape. Median in the alley.
The blue in this is existing. That light blue dashed, so this is the head-in parking. And the median in the delivery zone up here, and you can see that with the angled parking, we've tightened that up to add more space along the river pretty significantly. If you can see where the parking is now and where um, we propose it.
So we made the assumption that we wouldn't need that delivery zone um, in the alley there. And then for the dismount plaza and the bike parking, um, that is where we have our parking loss. So we relocated those dumpster buildings and that parking is now part of the pathway. So those were the trade-offs.
Parking spots generally twenty feet in depth, so it's about a twenty-foot shift that's given back to people and river and bikes rather than cars.
Uh, the, the river portion of this, uh, with the cantilevered uh, trail and um, the, the bridge and how that is set up, it seems really attractive. Having gone out there and kind of look at, seeing the line of sight, seeing what you're trying to accomplish. I, I'm fully supportive of the trail width, the multi-use, uh, the way that the bridge is reimagined. Uh, the cantilevered trail, all of that, um, I think epitomizes what we're trying to hit with this project. And in, in, you know, kind of that thirty thousand foot view, I think it, it hits on, on, on every uh, spectrum. When it comes to the interior, uh, there are some observations on, you know, from being out there, on how that alley is still used. That, you know, uh, Todd and I actually were out there and we're, we're kind of witnessing, you know, the people that were, you know, having a cup of coffee and walking and socializing are the ones that were uh, with dogs, were along the river. But the people that had things to do are still going from point A to point B in the shortest direction possible. And, and I know that, I'm sure you guys spent time looking at this, but if there was any way to keep the parking self-contained, where the alley really was only used for those business owners and those garages and those parking spots. I think that would be an amazing feat and it would be a really big service for uh, the, you know, the UPS drivers, the people that are trying to get to work or trying, you know, we saw what Breck Distillery was making a deli- like, you know, running samples uh, from their, their storefront down to their car, whatever it is. I, I think that it'd be, I guess it would be remiss to not look into that and say, hey, is there any way to make that two-way directions inside the parking and have that self-contained? So that we can more or less close off that alley for pedestrians and the occasional vehicle that needs to access their business or their home or their rental uh, along that um, east side. Um, I, I think a lot about when, you know, if you road bike to Frisco, there's this portion where the bike path is a shared driveway acc- or, you know, road to and access to driveways. And it has that feeling, right? Like you may see a car, but it's going really slowly and it's going into a parking, uh, you know, a, a driveway. Otherwise, it really is a bike path. That was kind of my, my take on what, how great it would be if that alley could have that feeling where I know we're spending all this money to guide people along the river. But just understanding through these um, pi- these uh, living labs that users will take the shortest path possible and just to ensure their safety, I think would be um, it'd be interesting to see what other options there are.
Yeah, definitely something like a balance that we can definitely study for sure. And I, and I, I get what you're saying. We want less cars just using that as a through space to circle around the parking lot and more of a, I'm only going to this section in a car because my parking spot or my garage or my business is there and, and less about um, visitors trying to find us a spot. Uh, I definitely could see that. We could look at, we'd have to look at some turnaround situations.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, Jay. So if we were to dead-end, you're talking about like dead-ending the parking lot so you can't go through. How would the delivery person get out?
You mean the um, for, out of the parking spots or out of the alley?
Alley.
Well, I think if they're turning into their parking space, right? If, if they're, if that's their building.
But are we gonna allow any truck?
I wouldn't think so.
Yes.
Right.
How would they get out?
How would they get out?
Uh, we would want them to access the alley.
Saying delivery trucks could go back.
Yeah, they're in the delivery zone by Schoonover and they're, have their. Gotcha, gotcha.
We can explore that as we advance design. I don't know if we wanna layer that into the master plan unless you feel super strong about it.
Even if we did part of it that way. You know?
To go back in. What's interesting though is, I don't know, I don't see us making the parking lot wider than it is now. And I'll tell you, it already, you cannot go the opposite direction. Like I was, I just drove in there and I was shocked at how tight it is on each side. So while I do think it's totally um, worth looking at, if there's a way to do that, I, I think it's gonna be a uphill battle.
Loss of parking.
Yes, um, and I, yeah, or.
We definitely would need to look at the width.
And I did talk to Eric about this at length and, you know, he brought up uh, what someone else already brought up about trees. Um, but I echo the fact that that alley would, is used a lot by pedestrians. And I think no matter what color the, the ground is or how attractive it is, I think it, oh, it will be. And so just, maybe just providing safety measures at the, at the least.
For sure.
In the master plan though, and I like the direction you're going with that, Jay, like if it is possible to make that alleyway primarily people, still give access to the people that, that have the right to drive through there, but it is, yeah, there's people on the river and then there was lots of people in that alleyway. And I think whether it's through the materials that are used from Blue River Plaza all the way to Lincoln, you can really, it really changes the dynamic and feel. Instead of kind of being like, oh, is there a car coming? Uh, I just think it makes town better where it's a more people-focused zone. And, and folks are either gonna be efficient and go straight or they're gonna be along the river. And I think there's some design there that can just make that all better. And if we have to give up five parking spots at the end there to have a turnaround, that's pretty simple to do when we have a, a parking garage that's not, that's very close by and, you know, the last six days hasn't been full. One of the things that I love, e- echo in Jay's comments there, the zone, you know, from the cantilever piece to me, also seems to be this kind of gateway. There's like, I think from a lighting and a, you know, a signage, it, it's expanding that and making it wider is gonna make it way more inviting to get from parking to the plaza. And so, uh, excited to, yeah, just excited for everything you've put up there. And hopefully there's kind of this engagement that, that really shows people like, it's actually closer to get to the Blue River Plaza from the garage than it is from French Street.
For sure, absolutely. And lighting is definitely layered into each segment, but this is definitely a critical moment for.
And lighting is definitely layered into each segment, but this is definitely a critical moment for lighting, for sure.
I'd love to see the, the pedestrian piece for the alleyway be, uh, part of the master plan, cause I think that's a home run for a community if we.
Jay and Todd, on the alley, who, who do we wanna use it? What, what vehicles? You know, would we like to encourage to use it? Would it just be delivery or would just people like that have the park, you know, have a garage in there? And, and I wonder, is, is there any, you know, sometimes you have like a, like gate, like a, a gate that right, and they. Either have a clicker in your car that opens just from, you know, from the radio. Or you have like a, a con, a combo, so like delivery trucks could use it or they, they could get that, you know, my, my in-laws. They say you, you go in there and if you have a little fob, it just opens up automatically and that would maybe kinda limit the just superfluous traffic in there. Is that just crazy to think of?
No, I think that is, uh, a really bright and, you know, it'd be.
Don't you think? Yeah, thank you very much. Alright, yeah, take that to the bank.
Good job Jeffrey.
Did we interrupt the middle of your presentation at the end or do you have, do you wanna finish?
Everybody knows where the bike parking is, right? Okay. Um, why don't we go to the next sheet? We'll just show the section, um. Was this really helpful for you guys to understand what that Cantilever section could look like? This is obviously still really conceptual and, and we are not structural designers, but. This is essentially, um, kind of what that could feel like and what that could look like and what is exciting about this, I think is that. It's not covering up too much of the water.
Like the pedestrians, they're like elderly and hold clutching each other.
Yeah, that was great.
Oh, that is me in alley.
Okay, um, and then we were already, uh, did anybody have any questions on the, the CAD plan that we're showing now with the dashed blue to kind of express what was existing versus what we're proposing? Any other questions besides what we talked about for the alley?
No, that was helpful to see. I know this is just a concept and not set in stone, but making sure that we knew we're accounting for ADA spaces within the parking lot.
Oh, absolutely.
We'll probably, we'll lose a little more than the thirteen.
I had a question about the bridge. I of course love that there, we've gone from three bridges to one bridge, but I just am wondering what we lose or. Like, is that just in response to us saying too many bridges or will this function fine?
I think we've honestly always thought about removing that bridge. We honestly have always kinda talked about it. Uh, like I mentioned earlier and, and Elena and I honestly just walked it before we got here, but the. Transition of that bridge is really, really hard and that bridge is also a bit older and would probably have to be replaced soon regardless. Um, and then the other thing due to the, you know, the fact that it's covered, it's, has a lot of vertical. Blocking of view corridor through there, so that's, that, that was another driver that we were looking at and it's like, you know, this bridge is. Kind of not meeting our goals. It really isn't meeting the goals of the master plan, but we wanna make sure that we still provide access and we don't wanna limit access to. That business or to those homes, but by doing this bridge and we did move it. North from where it was previously to kind of think about this and kinda make a balance. But by doing this, we really only have you walking thirty to fifty extra feet from where you would have been if you crossed the existing bridge.
The, the vertical cover that blocks views, but also the materials management buildings that were in this location, having this be bicycle parking. And opening up the river for more seating and for people to be there offers way more exposure to anybody along that, um, front edge than what's previous, than what's there now.
Also safety, just being able to see around that bridge and then again, the tightness that was there between the bridge and those buildings. That little zone there was kind of precarious.
Step on it.
Yeah. It was, and then there was parking right there. It was a little sketchy.
So this still, this meets our goals.
Absolutely.
I think the, you know, I, I just, I'm sure, did you reach out to Castaways? I think the line of sight.
Oh, absolutely.
Getting rid of the, uh, the covered bridge might appease them to the fact that they are gonna have to walk, I think, you know, you say thirty to fifty feet.
Absolutely and great point Jeffrey and the other thing I think is, um, with that gathering space that we planned right across from Castaways, there's gonna be people sitting there and looking right. At their business too, so a little bit more exposure and then who doesn't wanna get some takeout from either Castaways or the deli? And go sit in that picnic area. I know I already do that now. And I know I'm gonna wanna do it some more.
Alright, any more questions?
Just one observation, on every, anything you do, I just hope you incorporate signs, elevated signs that, that work in the winter when the, when.
Absolutely.
Ground is covered, so.
Alright, last comments?
I think just phenomenal work and yeah, really thoughtful design and love all the layers of the public art. The moving of the, um, trash enclosures and yeah, just phenomenal work so far.
Thank you. You wanna go to the last page just in case? This is just a, a next steps. We'd love to schedule a site visit with you guys to walk both this segment as well as the Gold Pan Alley. I think that would be. Really great and get some, some dreaming, some, uh, inspiration flowing, uh, and then the next thing that we're gonna look at is. The Sawmill Gold Pan Alley segment as well, um, like we talked about last time. And then, um, if there's any other segments that pop into your mind that we need to take a deeper dive on, we're happy to do that.
Sounds good.
I'd love to see us look at, at least kinda think about a master plan, you know, just a deeper dive from the Riverwalk to Park, just to kinda, to look at it, you know, in the same lens that we did here.
Well, that's part of the.
I mean, I think that's coming, right? We're working south.
Yeah, I think we absolutely can do a, a deep dive conceptual plan like we did here for that segment, absolutely.
There's some challenging spots there. There's also some huge opportunity there.
Oh yeah, for sure.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Alright, Historic Sheds Grant Program.
Thank you, Helen.
Thanks Cory, Elena.
Cody, I mean, at the, uh, at the coffee shop, the burrito joint, yeah.
It's okay, people call us Cory together.
They both work. Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Hello again. So this Historic Sheds Grant Program is in response to, uh, past public comment and is with the co-changes that we discussed earlier. And staff is proposing the creation of a grant fund to be administered by Breckenridge History. To support the stabilization of Historic Sheds and secondary structures in poor condition. And it's focused on those that were identified as not maintained and poorly maintained, um, in the interactive map. Um, which consists of twelve sheds total, so two that are not maintained and then ten that are poorly maintained. And, um, staff, um, focused on the two sheds that, um, were considered not maintained that we'd already been in contact with. To have Breckenridge History reach out to, um, get some kind of cost estimate, which they consulted with two different contractors and came up with an estimate. Twenty to thirty-five grand for the shed that's in the worst condition, which that shed currently has no roof, so. That will likely be the most expensive shed repair and the others should be significantly less from that cost. So staff recommends setting up a grant program to cover half of the cost of stabilization for each structure. With the property owner being responsible for the other half of the cost and having a maximum grant amount of fifteen thousand per structure. Um, and staff proposes focusing on the two sheds in the worst condition this year. And then doing two additional sheds in poor condition each following year for five years. Um, assuming the property owner is consenting and willing to contribute financially. And then, um, so with this, in twenty twenty-four, staff would request twenty-seven thousand to address the, um, two sheds in the worst condition. And the remainder of the funds would be requested during the regular budget process in the following years.
It's great, um, just a couple of other things. I just wanted to emphasize the importance of the grants program, kind of like we talked about earlier. In conjunction with the, you know, the more of the stick approach of you need to stabilize your structure. And so we have heard, um, Larissa's already reached out to the two shed owners with the, with the ones that are imminent collapse. And has sat down with one of them for quite a while and talked and they definitely would, um, en- enjoy some assistance. And if we can, that happen and that would, um, be much appreciated. They've indicated that. Um, one of those, um, owners has owned their home for over forty years now in the community. Um, the other one, um, is, um, I think a full-time resident here. Um, so anyway, there's, um, I, I think it's a good approach when we're out there talking to people about. Need to stabilize the structure, it's in our code now, to be able to offer that as a, you know. Kind of as a olive leaf, olive leaf, if you will, to like, you know, we're gonna lessen the blow a little bit.
Olive leaf is something totally different.
Anyway, uh. The other thing is, um, Breck History is happy to administer the program, but they prefer not to actually administer the funds. And so the town will probably do that.
Well, will they make recommendations?
Yes, they're happy with doing that, but it could affect their tax status. And their eligibility from grants from other agencies if they're actually doing out funds, so, yeah.
Carol, you wanna kick us off a little bit on questions or comments?
Right off the bat, Mark, you addressed some of the concerns with Breckenridge History, that making sure that further tax status, that they're in a position, um, but outside of that. I mean, they've been an incredible partner that we lean on in a lot of ways, but making sure they have the staff capacity and the bandwidth to be able to administer. Um, such a program, I think, um, that's important. On the carrot approach, um, and I'll get to the grant. I, I think we need to vet it a little more and make sure. The number is the right amount, like seeing up to fifteen thousand dollars, that's, um, public taxpayer funds really benefiting. Property owner, there is some inherent responsibility from owning property in a designated historic district. So I think that's something I'd like to hear where the rest of council stands on, on that number. Um, but back to the carrot approach, I think we also talked about, um. Leaning in Breck History in that way, which is really in their wheelhouse to provide technical support and educational resources. Um, within the demolition by neglect conversation, I think Kelly brought up that great point about education, so. I think education outreach is a huge part of that. Um, but, um, otherwise looking at this grant program, I do, I do have hesitations on the amount of funds that can go. Especially when we look at our own grant pro- um, program where we don't give many nonprofits that much money and they serve so many different community members, so. I'd like to talk more about them now.
Good points. Um, Jay, do you have anything?
I guess, uh, you know, the only thing I wrote, really wrote down from this is, see, have we explored what other communities are doing? In, in this realm and how they are choosing to administer funds if they are and, uh, what kinda. Um, responsibility they put on the homeowners versus how much they're, they're taking internally.
Um, we did do some preliminary research and, um, found some other, um, towns, counties and states that have similar grant programs. Um, for a more local example, Boulder County has a, um, it's called a Historic Landmark Rehabilitation Grant Program. And, um, they require an equal match from the homeowner, homeowner for the amount of money that they grant and they do up to ten grand per structure. But it's focused only on contributing or landmark structures.
Early Crested Butte has one too, that Larissa was telling me that they've got a grant program, but we don't have any of the specifics on that yet.
Uh, you know, anything that we, I think, we learned so much by, you know, skipping that learning curve and, and studying other communities and anything else that we can get from. Like communities such as, uh, Crested Butte would be fantastic.
And are there any other carrots that other communities are using for these, um. You know, demolition by neglect ordinances? Cause I agree carrot, some kinda carrot is, is a positive and not, not have it all be.
I mean, even the people that owned the place for forty years, that thing is appreciated astronomically, but you never know what these people's financial circumstances are. And if we're gonna kinda make a law that requires them to pay, you know, to put out some dough. I think we can prime the pump a little bit with that. I mean, I, 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 I mean, I, I think it should be managed well and, and have some oversight. But, yeah, I mean, some, some of these people, ten, twenty thousand cash is a lot of, a lot of money, so.
Yeah, I agree with everything being said, I, I struggle with some of the dollar amounts, so, you know, and, and would like to see a need-based. I think Jeffrey brings a great point. I think there's a wide variety of, wide range of need in, in our historic district and, uh. Some, some way to, to measure need and focus more on.
You think we made like an honor system type deal, like that you applied for the grant and, you know, someone, someone that is comfortable could say, well, I'll eat, I'll eat that. Cause for the good of the community and the people that might be, uh, uh, might be stretched, could, couldn't make, you know, apply for the grant, so you wouldn't necessarily have to. Give the money to everyone that doesn't need it, that actually might be willing to, to kick in for the betterment of the community to, and improve their own property, so.
Having the pump makes sense to me, but what Carol said really kinda strikes a chord. I, I'd be fine just putting it on the homeowner completely and then having more funds for. Folks more in need and I think you're in the historic district, there's an expectation that you're gonna preserve the historic character of your home and take care of it yourself.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more in that camp as well. I would be okay looking at a program that had like a very long list of parameters, if not need-based. Um, I just think this is, you know, like, these two owners happen to have been here for a long time and, but like, what's to stop then? Next year, the two people who apply bought their house last year for four million dollars and are now applying. So I think we definitely need to have a good understanding of what, um, the parameters would be, if not need-based. Um, I think need-based makes the most sense, but I do know that that's a burdensome process to oversee. Um, probably I would, if there's not a, you know, kind of something that makes sense, I'd probably lean towards just. Putting it on the homeowners because it is in the historic district, but. I understand that some people have been here a long time and didn't pay three million dollars for their home. Alright, so. The question that we do need to answer, um. I think you've heard some of the feedback about the program. Do you need more clarity or are you? Do you feel okay about going away from here and?
It sounds like we need to come back and suggest some of those parameters that you're referring to. And that could get your comfort level around some assistance, but otherwise, I'm hearing the majority are saying, I'm not. Entirely comfortable with it.
On whether the grant program should exist, like, are we that close?
Yeah, I think we're close, but I think, um. I think seeing parameter, well, yeah, seeing the parameters, I think there were four for. Parameters, Carol, what were you? Parameters, yeah, okay, then I think there were four for parameters and two. I was on the fence, so I was, I have no help to anyone. Um, so I think seeing the parameters is important and then, so basically we're not approving this. Financial ask right now. Don't say it.
I think it's important to learn, as Jay said, from other communities that have gone down this road.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Other like, like communities.
Anything else?
I think, uh, Breck History, Larissa has indicated they feel they've got the resources to do the work, but I'm sure if. It becomes, you know, burdensome, they'll let us know.
If we make it need-based, then they're out. Any other questions?
I'll just make an observation. You know, we talked, uh, we, earlier on, we talked about fire wise.
I'll just make an observation. You know, we talked, earlier on, we talked about fire wise, you know, and, and you kind of heap that on. New construction with kind of heavy seduction of, of existing homes, which is kind of incurring the costs, you know, to, to, to your property. And then here we're talking about if you have a shed on your home, we're making a rule that you're gonna have to upgrade that. I'm just, I just want to be sensitive to that, 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 we were asking people to put up, put up some dough. So, you know, I know what, what divided will come back, we'll hear it again. I just want to make that observation. You get a, you buy a place, you have this understanding, this is what costs to maintain your home and all of a sudden we're coming up with a, with a ruling that requires more money. So, you know, just, that's why, that's why I support, you know, priming the pump and a little bit for these guys. Olive, olive branch and a stick and a carrot and a.
And I do wonder if you, if we wait until the snow melts to really get a better understanding of how much these projects are gonna cost, maybe the ask won't be so big as well. So I don't know if there's more information to be gathered there.
Yeah, I know that Janet initially bringing it up, there was like some of the concern that the snow on the roofs of some of the structures would cause them to collapse, but it probably would only be the two that are in the worst condition that would be the most concerned. I mean, one doesn't have a roof, so.
All right.
All right.
Thank you guys very much. All right, and then entourage and annexation discussion. Where is that? Look, this is the night.
Next.
I'm terrible at this.
No, you're not. No, it's Jay and Dick.
Gotten rid of all the new business.
Okay, so we met on Entourage a couple of weeks ago. I think we had some good progress there. The first part of my report outlines the items that the council agreed to at the last meeting. We'll certainly want to just confirm with the council that you do agree with those points. The one thing I'm gonna add, Dick and I were just talking yesterday, on the fees, there was some discussion about precedent with waiving fees in the past and that. We haven't had any large projects come through twenty-four, under policy twenty-four A, so it's kind of new ground in terms of that. For example, the Stan Miller project, Highlands Riverfront, Tom Begley, that was prior to, you know, that was approved prior to twenty-four A. We are waiving fees and as I have indicated, it's been pretty much our policy at, at community development is to waive fees for deed restricted units, just because it's one additional incentive we, we provide.
But not for required units, because some of the smaller projects, we have required them to provide the house. You know, some of the restaurants have added decks and such.
Already dealt with it yet, so since we've had it in place, so.
I mean, we've made them deed restrict existing. What was the project?
R M U probably?
Was it R M U or was it the FOB place? Remember they, they were adding decks and, and such and increasing employees? And we did make them provide the employee housing mitigation.
Yeah, they actually came in though, but made an argument that their employee generation wasn't gonna change.
They argued the, the ratios, but they did need restrict some of their housing to satisfy this ordinance. So I, I think we have. We have done this. I, we, we have used twenty-four A and gotten some units based with, with fees.
Yeah, we could, we could do some more research on that too, if we'd like. But at any rate, just pointing that out, there's, currently we do the mitigation on thirty-five percent of the employees generated by business. That's how many, you know, for example, Mike in the BGV application, we'll have to mitigate that percent of employees for parcel four and the hotel condo there. And that's, you know, that, some communities require more, some communities require less in terms of the actual mitigation rate. It's never requiring all housing for every employee. There's usually some percentage. So that's the first thing and maybe, I don't know, if it's all right, Kelly, maybe we can just stop there and see if there's any of these issues that the council would like to revisit or if you're comfortable with how these deal points agreed to on February twenty-seventh are as written.
I mean, that's a great idea. So in your packet, there are one, two, it's rental restrictions, fees, vesting, policy eighteen A, parking, policy twenty-one R, open space, twenty-four A, employee housing, two R, land use, and five A, architectural compatibility. These are all things that we discussed last time. So I think we just want to get concurrence on if everyone's still okay with the agreements we made last time.
Just like to confirm that there is some work, live restrictions built in here somewhere that says that this housing has to be someone that works in upper blue, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know where that lives.
I mean, I still feel very strongly to set the precedent on twenty-four A this early. We just passed it. I mean, I was on council when we passed it, so it hasn't been that many years and we haven't even used it yet to create any housing. And we're, and we're cutting the legs off it already. I, I think that's a huge mistake.
Talking about the fees, Dick?
Yeah, I'm talking about we're setting precedent on these fees. We'll never charge them again. And I think it's a huge mistake. I, I think many of the other mountain resort communities in this state, in their wisdom have, have decided that, that developers have the responsibility to pay full boat to provide housing for the employees they're generating and, and we're the, you know, and we decided that too. We passed an ordinance around it and now the first time we can get some significant housing, we're gonna waive tens of thousands of dollars of fees. It's a huge mistake.
Mark, can you remind us how, which fees we're waiving and if Mike's paying the PIFs?
Yeah, Mike would pay the PIFs. It's the planning, development fees and the building fees. I, last time I gave you some ballpark estimates, I give you the same. The, the planning, development fees are around ten grand. The building fees could be seventy grand, give or take twenty or thirty is a real rough estimate. So you may be talking eighty thousand.
All right. Anyone else want to revisit this? Last time, Dick and I were both a no to waiving the fees and everyone else supported waiving, so we would have to re-discuss if we wanted to change that.
I think the PIFs are incredibly important. We've talked again and again about keeping the waterfront whole. And I think one of the compelling points that Jay brought up is that we want to encourage this new housing. So I haven't changed my mind. I'm supportive of waiving.
I'm with Carol.
Thinking, are you ignoring me, Jeffrey?
No, I'm thinking.
Look at her, she won't call on me.
No, I'm, I'm with, I'm with Carol.
All right, we can move on, Mark, to the remaining deal points, please.
Okay, thank you. These may be best, I, I think at the end of these, I asked for council input on them. I think it may be best to just take them one at a time here. So the first one is, is density. And like the last application or the original one that came in a year and a half ago, the project will exceed the density that's allowed on the site and so negative points will be incurred. And we're guestimating about forty negative points based on this proposal. So anyway, the applicant has requested a waiver from that. The one thing I would note is that previously, the number's a little higher, I think it was minus thirty last time around. The number's higher because now there's no mass bonus. So I believe Mike can say, but the, the building may have got a little smaller. I'm not positive on that. Okay, so it's, it's even a little more of a, considering the building's smaller, the mass bonus is more. The, the mass just affected it significantly, so that's why you're seeing minus forty points on that.
You wanna take council's input, Dick? How do you feel about, and this is just to allow more density. We're not providing this density. It's just allowing it.
Right, no. No, I, I, this is an important project and I appreciate the, the applicant's willingness to look at this site for the location of this housing. I think it's a much better site than what we previously looked at. And I understand it's gonna take some, some waivers to, to our code to, to make it happen, so I'm in favor.
Okay.
The density piece.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Building height?
Okay, building height. And hopefully take, got a chance to take a look at the modeling that was shown. The building's gonna exceed the height. It's recommended at twenty-six feet, so that's two stories in our code. So anything above that's gonna incur negative points. So given that they're, I'm guessing it'll be about a forty-two foot tall building. Based on how we measured in our code, it'd be subject to negative fifteen points for being essentially what we would consider a three to a three and a half story building. Look at the drawings themselves. It doesn't appear that, at least in my opinion, it, it looks more like maybe, let's say, two and a half stories. Lot of it is two stories in northern part, daylights to the garden level there in the third level. So anyway, that's, that's the request is for a waiver from the negative points associated with the height. Looking for if the council is generally comfortable with, with this.
Jay, you wanna kick us off?
I, I wish you didn't because I, I really wanted to hear what other people said. Cause I did have a little bit of a red line on this, saying that I did not want three stories in the gateway of town. This was a, this was, you know, very passionate about the height that comes in on this, on this location. But seeing the renderings kind of really brought me into a new place of going, all right, well, I see what Mike was talking about. This really doesn't look like a three-story building. And, and so then I, you know, I get the insecure feeling and going, well, you can make renderings look like anything. What's the building that look like when it's physically there? And I think that's where I have this difficult point of going, well, it's within six R, I guess, six A, right? Of the absolute building height, because it's less than two stories above. But is that something we're willing to wave points on? And, and I guess I really have a hard time hamstringing the planning commission on what is a preliminary non-binding drawing at this point. And so I, I'm struggling with this one.
I get it.
I apologize.
Does anyone want to go first?
I can weigh in with some kind of thoughts to just help you weigh it, maybe a little bit of a different perspective on it. I appreciate kind of the lens that you're looking at from Jay. You know, I think as we look at getting built out, especially in what I call kind of that like dinner in, dinner out zone where you can walk everywhere, I think there's a ton of value with housing to get employees thoughtfully housed close to town, on transit, where you can get on your bike, out the back door, where you can walk to work every day. And, you know, if this was five stories, I might block or four, but I think this is a thoughtful way to make sure we've got employees close into town without negatively impacting the character of our community. So I think it's a, it's absolutely where we should look at adding that third story. And, and, you know, from looking at a lot of new construction, over three hundred units here over the last ten years, the distance from the car to those homes is a big enough gap where I think you're gonna see the bridge lines behind it. So I think it's absolutely where we should have three stories.
Could you explain hamstringing the planning commission, Jerry?
Meaning that if we provide this variance and we waive the points, perhaps the plans don't look like the picture that is pictured here. After more thoughts put through it and they, they go through the design, that for whatever reason, the grade isn't what was mocked up here. This is, well, very well done. It's kind of back in the napkin. Hey, this is what it could look like. And I just, if it doesn't look like that, if we bring that in to planning commission, we're waiving those points. I think that's, that's kind of where I was coming from.
Yeah, he's back in the napkin, by the way, but. And he assures me this is.
He's super imposed.
Right, right. He assures me this is very tight in terms of what would be presented. It's a minus fifteen points on this is a, is a deal killer on the building, right? It doesn't get built, because there's no way. This, this is not a big enough project to come minus fifteen points and so.
Dick?
I, I've been looking at this property for a while, just hoping that we could do something. I, I think the topography of the property allow us to, to go with this height. I do not want this to set precedent in any way because this is a unique topography. I don't think it will, but I think we need to recognize that. I, I also think it needs to be kind of tied to six R and seven R, the next two that we're gonna talk about. I, with, with six R, I, I think it's critical that, that roof line is broken up because, you know, the, the combination of the, of the, 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 the height of the building with the straight roof line. I mean, and I think what I'm seeing is good enough for me. I just don't want to see that change. I think that's really important. And with seven R, I, I think with this size building on this site, it's a stretch. And we need to find ways, whether it's partnering with neighbors or whether it's being creative in design, but we've got to get some buffering and some landscaping on all four, well, at least all three sides. North, south, east, I mean, I'm, north, south, west, particularly west. I, I think some thoughtful landscaping on the front of this building could help break, break up the, the, the size of the building, the height from Highway nine. I'm a little concerned, as Jay pointed out, renderings can show a lot of things. It shows like we have a fair amount of space between Highway nine and the front of the building, but I suspect that's pretty tight and we're gonna have to be quite creative to get some, some kind of natural buffering in there. But I think it's super important. So I think all three of these are tied together for me.
Um, Carol?
Yeah, I agree with what Dick just said, well said. It does read as a two-story building, the topography allows for it. I think we don't wanna tie planning commission's hands. So is there a way to add some sort of parameters? Because this build is based on boxes. Is there a rough height, height that we know? And is there more we can do to waive those points? Were you gonna say something to that?
I, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I do that anyway, so.
We all do, Mike.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's probably a way to, to make sure that you're comfortable with, with respect to the building height by saying with respect to the height, that it's only over on the northern side of the property, not the southern side of the property, right? The intent, to your point about topography, is, is to use the slope to your advantage. The intent, to your point about topography, is to use the slope to your advantage. And so just write that into the agreement that, that it's the, it's the intent of this waiver of points that it's accomplished through the topography yielding three stories in the north and two stories in the south. So it presents like this drawing. And then I think that that potentially, you know, addresses your, I don't wanna speak for you, but, you know, it does, if that addresses your concern, that's one way that we could live with a condition that's, that, that keeps everybody comfortable with this.
I think that would be a win-win.
Along with the buffering and landscaping and such.
Right, because there's also the opportunity for the council at, at an approval point to come back and see what the planning commission approved and say, yes, the landscaping is sufficient, given the context of the waiver of less landscaping than what will be required, but feels good enough given the site conditions, that kinda thing.
So we'll wanna have some language about both the topography and the landscaping and the...
But yeah, I think that, I think that what Bill has shown here is that we can screen it somewhat. I mean, it's a corner on a state highway. It's, it's, there, there...
Yeah, but it's also the entrance of town. It's important.
And, you know, there's a lot of those.
This is an important...
You're choosing all the entrances.
Yeah, yeah.
Jeffrey?
I'm, I'm okay with the height. I, I, what is, is echoing what Dick said. I'm more concerned buffering on the north because that's the residential area. And I'm, you know, we can talk about that with a seven hour coming up. But I'm not too worried about taking the aesthetic attraction from Seven-Eleven or even Highway nine. But to the north for sure, there are people that live in that building and businesses in that building. I think the topography suggests that it could, it could make it, it could make it feasible a little bit higher and maybe breaking up the ridge line would, would kind of ameliorate any sort of aesthetic concerns.
Okay, so as far as building height goes, we're gonna work in some language that, that it presents like it's two stories on the south end and three stories on the north. All right, sounds like you have support for that. I support that. And then, yeah, it said there was engineering. Yeah, engineering and development code waivers. Mark?
Yeah, I was hoping Shannon might just come down for a minute to help, help you understand these.
She's been working hard tonight. Made a lot of trips to the front.
Are we looking for an overview or my consensus, what?
Maybe just a brief overview of what the requests are.
And your consensus.
And my consensus. If we are going to be asking for the same variances as the last project, I, I do support them. They're mainly based around the need to infiltrate on the site versus detain the water. And the variances relate to how an infiltration facility would work in proximity to the river versus our code. Our newly written code is pretty strict on infiltration. And I think this site would warrant some flexibility, given that we won't be negatively impacting the Blue River. Where we left it with the team last time was finalizing that and having their engineer give a statement that we would not have any adverse effects to the river or downstream facilities, given the variances. And some other variances are the distance from the river for the infiltration equipment. Their site is just so close to the river that they can't meet our buffer that we wrote into the standards. And then the volume of water that will be detained versus treated for water quality. When you're that close to the river, detention isn't as important as water quality treatment. Because when you're detaining, you're trying to mimic peak runoff rates so that you're not sending all that water to the river faster. But when you're already basically on the river, that's not as much of a difference and not as important to the river's health. Does that make sense?
And so is that monitored, that water quality is monitored?
It's not monitored. I mean, they would meet the treatment requirements for water quality, but not the time for detention.
So it would be by, by design is what they, how they would meet the?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They just wouldn't hold the water on-site as long.
And you would approve the design?
Yes, but it would be on the back of their engineering firm to give their opinion and back that they're not doing anything adverse to the river or downstream. That makes sense, it would be their liability.
So then you monitor it? And if we came back and said, it's not working as designed, then they would have to correct it?
Mm-hmm.
And you'll ensure, I mean, you feel like you'll ensure that we have language sufficient to hold the engineering firm to that?
Yes.
Hey, I know everyone trusts Shannon, so. Oh, Jeffrey doesn't.
Oh, okay.
No, not fine.
And then on the width of the entry?
Off of Highway nine or the existing one off of County Road four fifty?
I thought the one off County Road four fifty was just for the warehouses.
And it is, and it's existing and it's wider than our standards. But given its use, I'm not very concerned and I think forcing that to rebuild it is...
I'm worried, I just wanna make sure the one off Highway nine is sufficient, is, is wide enough. I mean, there'd be cars coming in that, you know, off a busy road and going out off a busy road, so.
Yeah, and that one will meet then the requirements of CDA, which I think are larger than what's in our code. So I do think it'll be sufficient.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Thanks, Shannon. Okay, five R architecture. The modular construction, in association with that, BGV's agreed to do fiber cement siding or they could also do natural wood siding if they wanted. But we've got a written condition down here that would tie that to, we wouldn't be assigning negative points. And basically what it says is exactly what our code says, is because they'd be using the fiber cement siding. And we're comfortable as staff with that.
So if it's allowed in our code, do we need a call out?
Fiber cement siding is yes, as long as there's some wood trim or a stone base on each elevation side of the building.
They're committing to natural wood trim around the windows, correct?
Yeah.
I think I read that, yeah.
I guess I'm confused. Why do we need this in here if it complies with code already?
The applicants have requested it for purity, I guess, when it goes in front of the planning commission down the road.
Negative points?
But, but you're correct, it does comply with our code.
Cool.
Our code changed. This would be a permit that was in place, so it'd be more or less grandfathered in.
It would, yes, if this was there. So that's, that's the scenario that that would protect them from.
We just didn't wanna be in an interpretive loophole here, right? That we've got, because we're doing the box build, the pre-bab build that comes with the cider cement, you know, however you say that word, already there. And so we add the wood to the trim to make it be compliant. We just didn't want there to be any confusion. So we're just, like, I think with many things that are occurring in multiple parts of this, there's, there's duplicity just to create, I think that creates clarity as long as it's consistent. And so we're just asking for a confirmation for that.
My concern with the duplicity is, is that we're gonna be waiving something we don't realize we're waiving. I mean, most of, so much of our code is, had so much in it. If we're waiving these negative points, or I'm concerned are we waiving something we don't realize we're waiving? So I, if it, if it meets code, the concerns meet code, I see no need for a variance. Personally.
I agree with that.
Tell you what we're doing.
Protection against it changing.
Right.
We've already started discussion, so if it changes...
It won't.
Then it, we, I mean, we, we couldn't change it.
And it won't apply to...
Oh, and a building permit, then it would be, then the building permit would, the new code would govern at that point. Right?
Yes. Not hidden, no, it's out there.
Lot, everyone up here.
So that's the just that, we do need a variance if that...
Well, we just need to hedge that, that against the code change.
To me, I'm happy to leave it in there. It's an easy ask and provides clarity for the applicant without much burden to the town.
I just haven't read, what is it, five R? And it's in Tyree, so I don't know if there's anything else in there.
You know, the, the easy out on this is just to narrow the scope a little bit and just say that...
Yes.
Just the fiber cement.
Where are the scope?
Instead of saying, we're gonna waive five R, just say that we're waiving, or we're confirming that.
Fine. And that's exactly what this wording does, actually, Jay. It, it's specific to fiber cement siding. It does not waive all five R.
Okay, great.
Thank you for the confirmation.
Yep.
Okay.
We good there?
Yep, building height.
Okay, building height. And this is the, there's a negative point, points associated with excessively long roof ridge lines. They do believe they will exceed fifty feet in length on some of these ridge lines. It is broken up, as you can see, it's kinda looks like three.
Yeah.
That's where there is a break. But anyway, the applicants have requested a waiver from those negative points.
Just measured it upstairs by using the parking striping to confirm it's close to fifty feet.
He is doing back of the napkin.
Yeah, he is. We'll have to have a talk about that when we're done. But I think we're close to, this is a question of if we're a couple feet over, we just don't wanna walk into buzzsaw negative points on that is what we're saying here. Yeah, the mod, if we get right, the distance we're gonna have to adhere to in that modular spacing?
I think it's...
About going eighty.
Right.
I'd like to reference this picture, you know, as long as it...
With the variation?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Or just say that it's less than sixty feet?
Yeah, or fifty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the variation is important, but if it's not fifty-five or fifty feet, that's fine. Is everyone all right with that? Okay. An environmental design, seven R?
Thank you, Kelly. And this is regarding, the applicants identified a concern that they may not be able to meet the full buffering requirements on the east and north. I think we've already heard the council weigh in a little bit. Eastern side is probably the least important, given it's next to the mini storage. The, the north, on the other hand, is a little different scenario there. You know, the Summit Center directly north of it. Looking at the plans, honestly, a lot of the vegetation or the trees that are shown are not even shown on the property. I know they're just conceptual at this point in time. But it's pretty tight there. And so that's what the request is. You know, staff even, you know, Chris and I were even talking about, not, not an ideal solution, but, you know, maybe a fence even belongs there because it's just pavement on the other side, Summit Center there. But anyway, they have requested a waiver from negative points for privacy buffering to the north and the east, and we look for council input.
I'm very sensitive about the north. But, you know, I, I don't think, I don't think a fence is out of the question. It's next to a parking lot, but, but there is, you know, structures a little bit further than north. So, yeah, I, I say whatever we can do if we need to tighten up the language a little bit or, or, you know, or get, you know, some, some oversight. But yeah, I'm, the only thing I'm really even sensitive is the north. I'm not too worried about Highway nine. I, I don't, I don't really consider this the real, what do we call it?
Entrance, gateway?
No, we went to get Seven-Eleven and...
Do you wanna sign?
Come and go.
Generally has a great site.
Come and go there, then there's Seven-Eleven. I think this is gonna be much more attractive than, than either of those two things, the mini storage. So yeah, I, I am very sensitive to the north and I'd like to, and I don't think a fence is out of the question, you know?
Carol?
Yeah, I'm fine waving it again. If there's some parameters to preserve so many trees or plant so many mature trees, then... Yeah, there's none. I'm looking at it now. And the render...
Right.
But...
Get some of these in there.
No, I'm fine.
I agree with Carol.
I agree with Carol and Jeffrey.
I mostly do. I, I mean, I'm sensitive to the north as well, like Jeffrey. I, I am also open to creative solutions like a fence. With Jeffrey, I'd like to work with the neighbors that, that have expressed interest in the north, try to, to work with them as best possible. The west, to me, is huge because the Seven-Eleven is our ugly entrance right now. And we have a great opportunity to make it a whole lot better. We should seize that opportunity. And so the west i- is, is very, very important to me. And I think we wanna get as much buffering, as much landscaping as we can to the front of the building. I think that's really important.
I'm fine with the waiver and I, at first blush, I do not like the idea of a fence. So I just wanna be on record saying that.
Those are all the code provisions. The next section is the public commitments that have been offered up. And these are mainly regarding pedestrian improvements in the area, primarily for pedestrians. So looking for council feedback on these, if you think these are sufficient to, as a public commitment as part of this agreement.
So even though it's employee housing, we still have to have the public commitment?
Well, it's because we've, I've talked with Kirsten some about, some about this and we're gonna be looking at this as an annexation and development agreement. And because, because of the waivers being requested from the code, the development agreement comes into place. So because of that, there needs to be public commitment provided.
Thanks for that. All right, comments on these? Comments on this list or...
I always go first.
Okay.
I, I'm actually very happy with these pledges or the, the public benefits here. The, the circulation, pedestrian circulation, I think is very important in this area and especially will be even more and accentuated when we have forty to eighty people living in these, in these one-bedroom apartments to be able to get to public transportation safely using sidewalk in this really difficult intersection. And so I applaud your efforts and I think that they are adequate and well-thought-out.
Yeah, this intersection, as we know, is super dangerous. I think these are huge public benefits, make it safer, more pedestrian-friendly. Separate, I'm supportive of all these public benefits. The one question, and I don't know what can be done better, just to make sure residents don't take a left from Huron onto the property. I mean, there's nothing we're gonna be able to do, but I'm just worried of that creating more of a cluster. So from Huron, so like they turn and like back up.
Oh, oh, oh.
Which happens anyway.
Yeah.
Another problem, you're not gonna solve everything. Yeah.
One more.
I think a fence would work. I'm, I'm okay with this.
I'm good.
I agree with that thing said, and I'll add one that you didn't even put in, Mike. It's how I started. And I, I really, really do appreciate you moving this, this housing to this site. It's such a, it's, it's a much better location, so thank you.
I also, I concur. I think the most dangerous thing that happens there is the summit stage flying through that intersection. That would...
Well, that's a challenging intersection.
Yeah.
Lot of kids.
Couple of things we'll work on, but most of this is pretty straightforward. We will make our best attempt to come back for a first reading in two weeks.
Okay, anything else?
Nothing else?
Seth? Anything, anything extra to add?
All right, thank you guys very much. Thanks, Mark.
Welcome.
That's how you run a meeting on time.
Thanks, Mike. Meeting adjourned? I'm gonna call to order the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, March twelfth, seven P M. Roll call, please, Helen.
Council member Beckerman.
Present.
Council member Sade.
Here.
Council member Bergeron.
Here.
Council member Rankin.
Here.
Council member Carlton.
Here.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Here. All right, approval of the minutes. Town council minutes, February twenty seventh. Any changes, corrections?
Impeccable.
Okay, those are approved. Approval of the agenda.
Mayor Protem and council, we will be removing the first readings for code updates to policy twenty-two A and policy forty-eight A. Um, the demolition by neglect ordinance and the BGV development agreement. We will bring those back to you at another meeting for first reading.
All right, so that's number seven, eight and nine.
Yes.
Okay. Great. All right, we're gonna have communications to council. These are non-agenda items only, three minute time limit. Do we have any? Oh, all right, continued business. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the public comment. Yep, perfect.
My name's Richard Himmelstein. Hi. Wanted to talk about the traffic congestion coming down from, uh, peak eight, peak seven. And I know that there was some discussions earlier today about possibly a tra- traffic circle at, at ski hill and, and park, and I would really be in favor of, of that. That's one of the busiest intersections coming down from, from peak eight. And if we could have a traffic circle, I think it would be wonderful. I know the developer, uh, did his own traffic study. I reviewed it. We had a traffic study engineer review it. There's a bunch of inaccuracies in it. I don't want to, uh, go through all the issues in it, but I would really request the town do its own traffic study. I would really be impressed if we could somehow incorporate the, the gondola, uh, possible later hours in winter time and tie that into the traffic study just to see how much that could help with the whole congestion. Um, I also want to just talk about, um, workforce housing. I know, um, there's a lot of potential development going up on. I just wanted to talk about looking at it from a holistic, uh, perspective. If, like, I, like, I would really want to know in, with this development, how much workforce housing uh, needs it would create. Instead of just having, and I, I, I'm not saying this disrespectful because I know you guys work hard and I really appreciate it, but I, I just think that when we just have arbitrary workforce housing requirements without actually doing it to the actual building, we end up ending up with even shorter workforce housing. And I, I'm a board member for one ski hill and we're, we're suffering with workforce housing needs. And I just think that a project like this is gonna make it harder for us. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you very much, Richard.
Um, I just want to weigh in and say that I would recommend that, um, that testimony be encouraged to be brought back for the public hearing that we'll have on the development agreement at least, any portions related.
Ah, okay. So what she's saying is that part of your, um, testimony, it, the part that, about the BGV development, um, could also really be brought up when we talk about the BGV de- development later. Um, so do you want him to bring it again, or can we just?
Yeah, we need to take all testimony at the hearing. And so I, oh, sorry. So you're standing there. We'll reach out to you and make sure that you have the date for that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kirsten.
Good evening. Uh, John Desimone, Seventy Third Region Drive. I, I just want to echo what the last speaker, uh, indicated. Um, I think this weekend, uh, Saturday at five o'clock, the line up Ski Hill Road was all the way to Shock Hill. I've never seen it quite that, that long. But I, I do think that there's some traffic opportunities. I will come back at the other hearing. I wanted to express my happiness, though, in the recommendation of the traffic study for considering a diagonal crossing or a pedestrian scramble at Ski Hill Road in Main Street. I think that would make it a much safer intersection for both cars and pedestrians. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comment. So will, I, both of these comments are related to.
Yeah, to the extent there's any additional testimony, let's make sure that we just drag people to the hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks very much for the participation. Good points all around. Um, public comment is closed. No more. All right. Um, continued business. The second reading of council bills, series twenty twenty-four, council bill number five. A bill for an ordinance approving a subordination agreement with First Bank pertaining to Staples Village Homes LLC financing for the Staples Village project.
Uh, Mayor Protem, council members, uh, the developer in this, of the Stable Village, um, came to us and recognized some savings if they were to go with a different lender for some financing of infrastructure in phase one. The, uh, is very common for lenders to request the subordination agreement in the event there are, um, any defaults in the, uh, project agreement. So we discussed this at workshop session, but if there's any additional questions, please let me know. This is on second reading and there've been no changes since first.
Thanks, Kirsten. Any questions for Kirsten?
Yeah, so how does that work? Someone has a loan and then they find a, a, an entity that will give them better rates on that, the, on that loan and they just switch?
I, they hadn't locked in the lending, but I, it is my understanding that they were with an original, um, lender and, uh, must have done some sort of quote and found better rates with.
Any other comments? Questions? All right, comments from the public on, uh, council bill number five. Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
On second reading and we pass council bill number five, series twenty twenty-four, title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carlton.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yes. Council bill number six, series twenty twenty-four, a bill for an ordinance amending the code pertaining to water service charges. James.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Protem and town council. Uh, James Phelps for the record. Um, the bill for you, in front of you this evening for second reading will amend title twelve of the town's municipal water system, um, section of the town code. Um, as discussed today at the work session, the changes or revisions, I should say, are to the definition, the rates, um, the fees and the usage of water. And there are no changes from the first reading of this ordinance.
Thanks very much, James. Any questions for James? Any comments from the public on council bill number six, series twenty twenty-four? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Second reading and we pass council bill number six, series twenty twenty-four, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Council member Sade. Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carlton.
Yes.
Council member Bergeron.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yes. All right, so just so everyone can keep up with us, we're, um, we have no new business tonight. We had a great work session with lots of discussion, and so we've decided that the three items under new business will be postponed to a later date. But we do have resolution number nine, series twenty twenty-four, a resolution adopting the town of Breckenridge Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Guidelines as the town's annexation plan pursuant to section thirty-one, twelve, one oh five, one E C R S.
Mayor Protem and council, uh, this resolution will adopt the town's comprehensive plan and, along with the land use guidelines that the town has adopted to serve as the town's three mile annexation plan. This is something we typically do on an annual basis as required by state statute.
Thanks, Mark. Questions for Mark?
Housekeeping.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion, please?
Will we pass resolution number nine, series twenty twenty-four, resolution adopting the town of Breckenridge Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Guidelines as the town annexation plan pursuant to section thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh five.
Second.
E C R S.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Council member Bergeron.
Yes.
Council member Carlton.
Yes.
Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yes. All right. We have to scroll way down now. All right, planning matters. Um, planning commission decisions. Anything to be said there? No, no call ups. Report of the town manager and staff.
All right. Um, so I will be away starting tomorrow morning. Um, and I'll be back on Sunday, but Scott will be here and will be.
Is he at full power of attorney?
No.
The, the, the truth of the matter is.
But I will be available, um, if you need me for anything. Um, we had a conversation with Excel last week about the L N G injection site. There, they had a two-year permit, which is expiring this year, and they let us know that they are looking at, um, other private property parcels. So they did not ask to renew the permit and they let us know that they will be leaving, which is good. And then I was gonna mention, um, so I'll just mention it briefly, although I don't have all the information. Um, after coffee talk on Wednesday, they, the skier was doing a peak nine evolution tour to kind of see what's changed and what they're planning to change. They had asked Kelly to join, um, and I got a message from John Copeland today asking me to share that with council. Um, but we did ask that they push the time back because it won't work with coffee talks. So once I hear back from him, I'll shoot it out to you guys.
Got a skiing or walking tour?
Yeah, so, um, once we have the, a time, uh, we'll get it out to you guys, just in case you want to go.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, let's see, report of the mayor and council members, um, cast and M M C. Cast was down in Denver and that's always our legislative session. So most of the time is really going over, I don't know, demographics and, um, things.
Economy.
Legislative stuff. Um, the governor came and got bullied around a little bit, but I think it'll be okay in the long run. Um, no, there's a, there's a big interest from a lot of the cast, um, towns to pursue RET. And, you know, we're unique in that we have that. So, um, but the governor Polis is just not interested in that. So, um.
He did say he'd take it away from us if that opportunity presented itself.
Oh, yes, he did.
Yep.
He said, no, and just the opposite. No, and just the opposite, I'd take it away. But there was, some of the things he said made it clear that he, there were, um, some things that are in that proposal that he didn't know about or wasn't well versed in. So, um, there's, there was still a little bit of hope. He didn't extinguish all hope, is all I'm saying.
What's going on with the, with the twenty-four R, that, uh, property tax, short-term rentals?
Yeah, so that one, um, the people who actually introduced that bill have taken it off of the table in order to make edits. And there's a strong belief that when it comes out, it will either be so different that there's no point in commenting on it right now. Or that it might be a bill that would really be meant, it would have no impact. It would be meant to collect data. And so, um, I did talk to our representatives down there and they suggested that we absolutely wait to see what comes out next and that, um, there wasn't, there wasn't a reason for us to chime in right now, for sure. But we did ask specifically just to make sure that we were all on the same page with expectations from the town of Breck and communication lines. And, um, they agreed wholeheartedly that we shouldn't be putting in our, taking a stand right now because they pulled it. So.
Well, we haven't been asked by anybody to do so, so.
Yeah. Yeah, now, now we don't even know what the bill says.
Don't know what it is, yeah.
Zero reason. Um, but we are watching that closely, of course. Our legislative commu- um, committee is as well. Um, the only, I think the thing that maybe was best, uh, best takeaway from cast is that it sounds like tourism and sort of sentiment for, um, travel is positive and up. Um, and so I think last year at this time, there was a huge amount of concern with inflation and lots of things going on, you know, wars and such, that people felt a little bit pessimistic. And this year, um, it, the numbers are not showing that people feel that way. So just hoping that we'll continue on, um, a nice, slow, positive trend. Anything else?
I think that was about it.
Okay. And then M M C, we have Thursday. So. Um, all right, open space.
Uh, well, the nice report from Ann. Jay was at that meeting, um, so nothing else to report.
All right, Breck tourism?
No meeting.
Uh, Breck history?
We have a meeting tomorrow, but since Jeffrey brought up all the backcountry cabins, I just wanted to highlight, um, Larissa reminded me, and Kelly, you mentioned it, that Breckenridge history is working on an updated historic resource management plan for sites in the backcountry. Um, and there's hundreds of sites out there, so they're working on prioritizing them with a scoring matrix, um, and prioritizing which sites to preserve. The Preston cabin, the one with the strap around it, um, is in imminent danger of collapse. So that one, they're hoping to get to sooner than later. Um, the plan's being reviewed by a couple more groups and they have funding and a contractor to take it up.
Yeah, Larissa texted me. She, I guess they have someone in, in mind to do that stuff.
Did she tell you how much that was, that's gonna be?
No, but we can check.
Curious.
The straps are cheap.
All right. Um, Breck Creative Arts.
No report. There's a meeting at the end of the month. Um, just one event coming up, March twenty-second. There's a talk on climate justice and the Latino community. That's in partnership with H C three, so check that out if you're curious.
That's great. Thanks, Todd. Um, C M L Advisory Board?
We have not had a meeting.
Childcare?
Um, we're actually, do have some news. Uh, we're gonna be, uh, suspending that committee for the present time. Um, I think with a lot of the tuition, or with all the tuition assistance going to the county and through ECO and with our trusted leader here, uh, on the ECO board, um, she's gonna keep tabs on it from there. And we're gonna be, uh, end with Cory, possibly heading to, um, Summit Housing Authority. It seemed like a good time to, uh, take a little pause and not spend resources and, uh, and precious time preparing, preparing for meetings and trying to come up with topics when there's just really not a whole lot there. And, uh, the, all the centers seem to be working really well together. Um, you know, Greta's been amazing, uh, being a leader in this, in the, uh, community for, you know, Carriage House and Timberline and some of the newer executive directors, uh, that she's very available to call. And of course, uh, Shandoids and we're always available to help. So that's my update there.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Um, we still have like the need for the infant toddler center. So hopefully someone in staff. I know that there's some changes going on, but at some point can be assigned to that and keep brainstorming that.
Have some ideas.
Great. Okay, social equity. Carol?
We have a meeting Monday.
And, ooh, arts and cultural master plan steering committee?
We did not have a meeting. We did fill out a dual poll, so hopefully we'll have, uh, consensus on a meeting, uh, upcoming.
All right.
Imminently.
Um, other matters? Any other matters?
Just, I have one. Um, I just want to keep, I want to remind us about, uh, on any of these new developments that we, we talked about, talked about today and try to, we, we gotta make sure that Alamo is, uh, is, is sold to them or suggested.
There's actually, um, Biden is pushing the F C C to prohibit both deals. So we're really hoping that doesn't happen. Um, the, the, I think the reason is that they feel like, um, it locks people in potentially to a higher. people in potentially to a higher rate, especially when it's included in their rent, where we're trying to get people good service at a lower rate. So what we're doing is, is, I think, what they want, but, you know, they just don't see it the same.
It's just, ALLO is awesome, and it's just night and day, their service compared to other providers and
It's interesting, because I've had the opposite experience on the commercial side.
You tell them who you are?
They're awful. No.
Oh, really?
No, I've had, they've been horrible on the commercials.
Oh, really?
That's, that's sad. I'm surprised.
Maybe we could chat, or Chris, we could chat with you so we could give some feedback to them.
I just dropped my name. I don't do that.
And they say, who? Yeah.
I have one thing. That's okay. I just wanted to recognize Helen and Brooke and Chris for a great job launching the new website. I think if you guys have been on there, I think it's been on there for, what, Brooke has been up for two days, three days? That's what I meant, a week, and just, I think it can't be minimized what a heavy lift it is to redo a website and to make sure all the links are working and go through it, make sure the content's right, and your government versus government, and, you know, even, I accidentally sat in on a meeting with it, and the, the, the amount of detail that they were going through to make sure that our website, which is a huge tool, which a lot of people visit, is navigatable, has the correct, you know, feel about it, and, and really, it just can't be under, underappreciated. So thank you guys so much for all your work.
You'll have a demo next meeting, right, Brooke?
Yeah.
Awesome.
That's great.
Have the ratings gone down now that Jay is, is the go-to person for Breck Buzz?
Thanks, Jay. Any other, other matters?
No.
Vic? Nothing? Okay. Everybody sees the scheduled meetings. Anything else, Shannon? All right, meeting adjourned.